Well, you can.
I mean, I'm doing.
I got two numbers even probably on what.
It's been one.
We're glad.
Yeah. Turned out, I gotta say. It's under the.
I don't know if this is like a statutory or kind of big. Right. Listens. I think we're, yes, I did. Say it pretty easy stuff like that every year. The sag and some.
Yes, exactly.
And I don't like that. That's why.
Labor. My real job comes to the.
Right, this is why, see what happens when you start. I know. This is like Eric, okay.
Yeah.
And I swear to God, this. It hurts more.
You're right.
See if.
I think I have another. It's like one of those. Westmore Street Bridge. Sunset. So it's a main more.
If not, okay, it's just something. Everyone sign in. Okay, welcome everyone. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Ladies. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Sir Bernard.
Yes.
Sir Bernard.
Here. Okay, so we're gonna start with the agenda item one, and it's the dispatch reading of the minutes of the work made twenty 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 five. In the regular meeting dated twenty one twenty twenty five. Two, we approve the bills. Okay, and then we have three, uh. The higher revised code five seven oh five point one four to transfer monies. As submitted by the auditor. Uh, dates of May eight twenty twenty five through. May twenty one twenty twenty five is listed. Four, to approve additional appropriations as submitted by the auditor. Uh, maybe eight twenty twenty five through May twenty one twenty twenty five. As permitted. Five, to approve the decrease of appropriations. Submitted by the auditor. The dates of May eight twenty twenty five. The May twenty one twenty twenty five. As submitted. Six. To approve transfer appropriations is submitted by the auditor. Dates May eight. Twenty twenty five through May twenty one twenty twenty five. Also is submitted. Seven, to adopt the resolution approving the submitted. List labeled O R C five seven oh five point four one D, March two oh two five. A purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now. Purchase orders in compliance with O R C five seven oh five point four one D. Then we'll move on to. Alex, do you wanna? Give us a little. Announcement about this.
Here.
Fire.
Uh, well, commissioners would get transferred, uh, so this is. Oh, sorry, Alex Stephen Jones Bush, Department. Um, back in January, there was an M O U signed. Uh, by the Board of Commissioners, uh, which elevated. Sharon Taylor to purchasing administrator. The intent of that M O U was in order to elevate her to the purchasing administrator, which she was in a union position before. So we had to give one to get one, so Sharon was voted, doing non bargaining position. The agreement was that the union would still keep the position of accounts payable that was Sharon's position before, however. It would go back to pay range eight that it initially where she began taking on additional duties, our fuss, so on and so forth, and was elevated to. So this goes back to the pay range eight, which left a vacant union position. Um, we were leaving it vacant for a while to assess, uh, because we truly had obviously budget cuts. Across the board, including in the Board of Commissioners' office, um, we were leaving it vacant, and it got to the point where. It, the work is not feasible for one person, and I, I would let Sharon speak to that, that's, that's not mine, but either way. The work is not feasible for one person, she needs somebody to help her administer the purchase sub orders, the invoices, pay for the entire, you know, anything under the Board of Commissioners, including but not limited to Sheriff's Office Utilities, so on and so forth. She does not just do purchasing for the Commissioners' office, it's anything else owned by the Commissioners as well. So with that being said, the union did start to push back, enquiring why we didn't fill a co set position, uh, per the M O U, and what we did was we asked the Board of Commissioners, can we go ahead and get this position posted? The answer was yes. Uh, we posted the position, so technically, again, it's a, it's a transfer, uh, the employees within twenty four ninety three within the Clerk of Courts office. The art, the contract is very specific of how we are to adhere to the process, so we post the job, it has to be posted for seven days, we are in compliance with the contract. We post the job, any union member is able to bid, uh, we did have multiple bids, that break, that break was provided to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, I believe we had seven, one, two, three, four, five, excuse me, five. Um, right off the top of the bat, the contract is very specific, something that we were, uh, able to do in this last contract negotiations was not just go by seniority, it actually goes by qualifications first. So they have to be able to meet the minimum qualifications on the job description, job duty. Uh, that is the first thing we look at, then of course, we look at if there's people who have. Multiple. They need the qualifications, we have, for example, in this situation, we had two minimum qualifications. We don't just go by seniority, again, at that point, what we do is we test and we interview. The contract is very specific, the test is sixty points, the interview is forty points. They are to be asked the same questions, they administer the same test, all of that was done through Community Resources Department with Sharon as the, um, she would be supervisor of said employee. So both of us were there, we did all of that, um, it was, the questions were tough, I mean, we wanted to make sure that we vetted this candidate, and this is the best candidate, um, with that being said. We did administer the test and the interview to people, and then after the test and interview was done, one decided to drop out, so at the end of the day, we were just left with one candidate we felt was qualified. So to approve the transfer of Jennifer Leonard from Clerk Specialist Bookkeeper at the Clerk of Courts, currently in pay range seven, year eighteen, twenty six dollars and sixteen cents per hour. Two accounts payable clerk, pay range eight, year eighteen, twenty eight sixteen per hour, effective Monday, June second, twenty twenty six. Uh, special note, this is pursuant again to asking twenty four ninety three job posting April twenty third through May second. Five union bids, two qualified bids were tested and interviewed, one qualifying candidate pulled their bid, and so this is the last, um. But to be transparent, commissioners. This was the one I told. It's not like, no. Just want to be transparent.
Thank you, Alex.
Uh, no questions. He will survey, uh, probationary period.
So unfortunately, we have to adhere to the contract, Commissioner, so there is no probationary period, we have thirty days to evaluate there, it's not technically called a probationary period with the contract. If it were a non bargaining employee, absolutely, you would have a hundred and twenty day probationary period. Uh, but it'll be a thirty day test, we call it kind of a trial and error period, um, if the supervisor feels that there's not enough. You know, there to justify keeping her after the thirty days, she could absolutely go back to her previous position. And we will ask, in this new contract, it is very important, we will ask that that job has to be remained open, so it kinda does, I hate to say this, but it kinda does hurt. It, in a way, others' operational business, because what happens is, is they can't post that job until we're confident that this employee is going to make it, because it is a union position. So we can't just go and say, go ahead, Clerk of Courts, and fill this position, because what if said employee does not pass what we'll call to some kind of. Trial, it's what we call it, um. So yeah, the Clerk of Courts would have to keep that open. The only way that we can get around that is if we do feel the employee is doing sufficient enough within, you know, a shorter amount of period of time, the employee can sign off a waiver to vacate, to going back to a previous position. Should they not. Want to save this. So it's a very complex process, um, unfortunately, as is. Union contract, so. But all the steps have been followed, any questions?
We have unsalvated.
So when we had done the budget, uh, beforehand, I had actually done allocated this person, yes, to answer your question. So before we even reorganized our office structure, I made sure, and actually, it was a net, uh, we actually had a cost saved. Um, so I believe it was roughly sixty seven thousand dollars, don't quote me, um, by putting everybody where they're currently out of the New York office structure, as well as Sharon being elevated and. Putting back this accounts payable position. Again, something to remember, this accounts payable position was a ten, now going back to the eight where it belongs, that is a huge, uh. Piece of how we save that cost.
And Alex, just to be clear, my understanding is we're still short in the Commissioners' office employees from where we were.
Yes, um, so when I did the budget, just looking at employee costs, okay, right, I mean, I didn't do your full budget, I just looked at employee costs. Whenever I'm proposing to the Board of Commissioners a change in your staffing, I will always give you the costs associated with it, so we're upfront and transparent. With that being said. There was another general clerk vacant on there, so technically, when I had costs for the Board of Commissioners' office, personnel only, again. There was an additional general clerk on there that is still vacant, and I have spoken with Lisa, I don't wanna throw, you know, you know, right now, maybe you're feeling, I don't know, but. We, at the time, didn't intend to post that position, so, but that's non bargaining, we don't have to post that position. What happens though with bargaining positions is. Once you enter into an M O U and you're agreeing to put that position back with the union, you, you have to. Fill that M O U, otherwise it would be considered unfair by our partners.
Well, I've, I've met Ms. Leonard through working her last year, she seems. I think she'll be a great employee, I know we've talked to Mr. Law, he hates losers down there, and. Uh. I think she'll be a good asset for the team of her.
She does come very highly recommended, um, in Commissioners, again, I know there's always, you know, some concern, you know, when you're bringing somebody new into the office, but. We truly asked our questions, uh, yeah, I mean, we wanted to make sure that the intent is there, because this is a job that's very important. Uh, to this office, and it's important for our success moving forward for the structure and how it's set up.
Okay. Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to agenda. Item nine, uh, do have Beth here to receive and place on file. One twenty five, March and April, monthly financial reports for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau. Submitted by Beth Carmichael, Executive Director, who's here today, Beth, do you wanna mention anything right now about the, the tour?
Um, I'll let Commissioner Malloy go ahead and mention that, but before that, I just wanted to say a couple of things, um. Not specifically related to our financials, but this Beth Carmichael, Trumbull County Tourism. Um, this past weekend, we hosted at, uh, Mosquito Lake, the big birding weekend, which was a huge success. They had expected one of their events was the raptor birds, and they expected maybe a hundred and fifty people, they ended up with over two hundred and sixty people just at that event alone. So even though the weather was really pretty this past weekend, that event was very successful. Also, I just wanted to remind the Commissioners that the wall that heals, which is the Vietnam, um, Veterans Wall that just came through town yesterday. The opening ceremony is at six P M tomorrow, I asked Dawn in your office to put that on all three of your calendars, if you wanna, and could make that to that opening ceremony. Um, also, just generally, there is a new park manager at Mosquito Lake. So, uh, Josie McKenna, who's been there for many years, has left to go to Henderson, and they've just hired a new person to come in to Mosquito Lake State Park. Oh, and then we also co-opted, Sit Magazine is, um, Ohio Wine Producers Magazine that comes out once a year. We co-opted an ad with three of our wineries here in Trumbull County, including Country Porch, Charbonnais, and Hartford Hill. They pay in, they cut, uh, the cost in half, we paid for half of those full page ad, and they split the other half of the cost, so. Working, it helps us save some money, but it also gives us some additional exposure incidents. So that's just a couple few of the updates. Um, do you wanna talk about tour?
Yeah, uh. This is part two of the economic tour, Trumbull County, we started this last year. In the northwest side of the county, where we took. People from our state. Representation, our Congressman's Office, we had someone from the Senator's Office last time, U S D A. Some of our department heads, um, to see, to be better public servants, we need to understand what people do in the county, we're representing the whole county, and a lot of times, we make decisions from here. On whether it be. Decisions David makes on a permit for trucking company, or, uh. To actually go out and see the roads and the bridges these people travel on, and we've got a lot of international business that comes out of this county that. Uh, we always think of the Lordstown's, and we think of Warren and Niles, but the whole rest of the county has a lot to offer, a lot of job opportunities, a lot of need for economic growth. And assistance from county government occasionally, so we started northwest. We, we've. Went to a cabinet shop up there, we learned about the industry, the Amish, and how much business they do, how many people they hire, how many dollars that they generate for the county based out of their shops. We also had, uh. A company that makes trailers that. Uh, they sell all over the world, that tethers hay basically and stacks hay bales, and, uh, it's. Uh, excess of ninety employees, I think it was, it was up in, uh. In the.
That's.
Bloomfield area, in Mesopotamia, so we, we went to each little community there, we made a tour of it on a bus. And you got to get out and meet with the people, meet with the owner of the end of the commons, meet with the, the owners of these businesses, and, and say, hey, we're. The people that represent you, that we're here to help you, what can we do for you, so we're doing now. The northeast side of the county, we're gonna start out of Strimboo Trucking, which has trucks all over the world, hundreds of trucks that travel the whole country. Uh, we're starting there to learn about their operation, and then we're going up to W I Millard Son's Farms, which is one of the largest farmers not only in northeast Ohio, but in Ohio. Farm over five thousand acres, they ship their product all over the world, and they also do in hydro ammonia, they ship all over the world. And one of the largest producers of that in the world. Um, so they're international agribusiness, and then we're gonna make our way up to C. Dick Thompson, at Peter Allen Inn, learn about Heritage Hill Farms. Uh, again, he farms thousands of acres and has businesses throughout the whole county, he did infrastructure in. Trumbull County, kinda on its own with the old craft plant and the sidewalks and everything else in Kinsman, so we're gonna meet with him to see how he did what he did. Make our way back down to Scenic Lakes and Trails, meet some people there in Shenango River, with that economy and, and, uh, the, the importance of that river statewide with the, the economic, uh, stimulus or stigma they have. Um, with it being a scenic lake, and then we'll, we'll cruise past, not fully decided yet, Sharon Speedway, and then Carrillo Fire is, is both on, on, on route there. There are businesses in Trumbull County that employ people that are attractions, that make money, generate economy of the county, and then we'll finish up it, um, with Jeremy Corolla at.
Uniserv.
Uniserv, which is an aluminum plant that takes big steel rolls and turns them into little steel rolls, and cuts different pieces and then moves metal around, you know, uh. In cooperation, kind of with P I and I, their other sister company, so these are businesses that generate millions of dollars in the county, they employ hundreds of people, if not thousands. So we're gonna get out and actually. Meet them face to face, let them know that we're there for them, let them know if you need something from the state, from the county, from, um, your representatives, or what tours them could do to. Let people know they're there, that's what this is all about, and then.
And learn a bit more about their businesses as well.
Right, and that way, we could better, we can't represent someone if we don't know what they do, I mean, just all talk, we don't actually get out there and roll our sleeves up, and, and see what can we do for you. Um, so that's what the gist of this is, we finish up at the end of the day, and at the end of the day, we'll head over to Cigar, they've got a festival going on. Um, at the cigar shop in Hubbard, that's, is gonna bring in hundreds of people this weekend, so. That's part two, part three will be southeast or southwest, and, uh, Beth will start planning on that for sometime in the next couple of months now. Hopefully, Commissioners, all three of us can attend one of these together, um, they did the last one, we had. Nick Santucci, and we had, uh, um.
Dave Thomas.
Dave Thomas, and Arian from the Congressman's Office, and it was, when we all, Lake, Lakes, and Lake River will be there, Chamber of Commerce will be there, Port Authority will be there, East Gate will be there. So they'll have all the representatives there, so that when we're talking about. Trumbull County, we're not just saying, well, what can we do for Stilwell Warren, or what can we do for something, the same people that we know about, Lordstown? Um, but what can we do for the whole county, to encompass the whole county, make the whole county stronger and better? And housing comes with all that, we'll be able to see what the needs are, and that's what Gary's coming, because that, that part of the county is a major infrastructure. Issue from Brookfield all the way north to Kinsman, as far as sewer and water, hopefully, David's able to send somebody there, because a lot of these businesses I talked about. I think all of them, you get permits for it one time or another, you're gonna give them some type of permit.
Same on the list today.
They're on the list today, so it's, you know, if, to understand them better, you can see them face to face, and just being a piece of paper that comes through his office that we sign off on. So, now, we do have some room on the bus, if someone thinks they're affiliated in that field, they wanna come. See, Don Zini's R S P P, Casey, I don't know if you're available Friday or not. You are padded, you're more than welcome, you take calls from all those parts of the county, um, so I, I would encourage that, any department head that feels like they have customers in that area, they wanna understand better. Or see what it's all about, and it's, and we thought before, it'd just be like, kind of a little fun little field trip, we realized. We need to do this all the time, you know, there are people throughout the county that have been overlooked by government for a long, long time, and that's gotta stop. And we need to represent everybody.
Time, after we talked to, um, Bill Strinbu. Um, Jeremy Corolla with Uniserv specifically reached out to Danny and said, I wanna be on this tour, so our businesses are really actively. Reaching out to us to say we wanna be involved, there's already people in Warren that have said, when you do Warren, we wanna make sure that we're. We're showing what we've got to offer as well, so it's, it's a really. It's, it's a brainchild that happened a couple of years ago, and, um, yeah, this is our second, we'll probably have. Another two, three, maybe four, but two or three additional ones in different areas, so we're definitely gonna hit Hubbard, and we'll get to Liberty, and we're gonna get to Warren and Gerard and Niles and. Falls as well, so.
Well, one thing we're realizing too is, especially with the northern part, that's why we went to them first. They have been grossly underserved by government for years and years, they've been out there like on an island, where we had split congressmen that. Congressman represented half the county, another congressman represented the other half, our districts were split with the state reps, and they never had. Township commissioners, like the three of us are, that actually understand. Their way of life and you get, and can. Communicate better with them, so it's time, we brought government to them, and they've been waiting and waiting and waiting for this for a long, long time, and now's the chance, we do represent every instance, county, and the people in Bloomfield. Are just as important as the people in Allen, and just as important as the people in Niles, and same with people in Kinsman, we need to let them know that we are there to serve all of the county, not just where the voters are.
I agree with that. Okay, thank you, Beth, thank you, Commissioner, um, still have two seats left on the.
We have a couple of seats, yeah, we have.
So if anybody's interested, um.
It is a full day tour, it starts at eight thirty in the morning at Brookfield, and it'll finish around four thirty at the hour. The problem is, it's, is a set to. Danny, it's short term, like it's short term, it's a day out of the office, and we get that, so if people can't make it this time, just let us know, we'll add you to the list with.
Beth, you wanna, you wanna talk about? The Airbnbs and that type of stuff now all.
Uh, now, we'll. Talk about that, but it's not on the agenda.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, um. Gonna move on with, uh, Trumbull County Engineer, I don't know if David or if your. Main man Gary here.
Uh, I'll talk on the next two items. Uh, okay, Eric can talk on the other ones if you want.
Does every name, so.
Yeah, well, that's good, that's good to see my name first.
Trumbull County Engineer.
Yeah, that's my true name. Anyways, uh.
Just for the, give, give your name.
My name is David, Trumbull County Engineer, yeah. Item ten is regarding our annual report that forces on, on an annual basis, and. Uh, we completed it within our time limits, and it'll be available, uh, you should have some drops. Uh, if not now, we should get some reports that are available to give to the public. So. That's number, item number ten, item number eleven is our contract, our union. And, uh, we had really good conversations with our union, uh, it only took about three meetings and maybe two weeks. Uh, to come to an agreement, uh. Just about every term was favorable to the union because of many years. Of my opinion, our labor has been, has not been treated good or honest. And so we made sure that our labor, uh, received, uh, pay that they deserve. That they received the benefits that they deserve, they are now at the same level benefits that our office has, when it comes to healthcare. And also, uh, we added. One day vacation that. The county had offers, we didn't, that is Juneteenth. We also added how they receive. County offers, but we didn't. Now we do. So we're trying to, uh, get more to the level of the county with our labor, and, uh, they were very happy with. Results and so, so.
That's it. Thank you, David. So this agreement is just for the, uh. People in the back.
But that is just for the union, uh, for the people in back, we have some members that are. Members of the union and some that are not members of the union, but are within the bargaining agreement, so. Uh, it's. Majority of them are for the people in the back, Commissioner, yes.
Very good.
Okay, thanks, thanks, David, uh, Gary.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner, Gary Schaefer, Engineer's Office. Number twelve is to concur with our office to grant a special hauling permit as listed, thirteen is to concur with our office to grant. Special hauling permit as listed, fourteen is to. Our office to grant the special manual fleet permit. It's listed. Fifteen is to concur with our, they grant the right of way permits as listed. Um, sixteen, uh, that's to grant permission to close South Levitt Road, remember, two weeks ago, you approved that, releasing a demunification agreement. That was drafted by the prosecutor's office, that was executed two weeks ago. Um, and this closure is in coordination with Warren Patch, it's Sheriff's Office, so we. Close contact with them. Close to that date. Um, seventeen. Is to award the lowest responsive responsible bid is submitted by Jet Excavating. Replacement of the, uh, Barton Messerly Bridge. Uh, that's Braceville eleven Bridge. And, uh, that spans Eagle Creek over there, just north of Nelson Moser, Braceville Town. So. Bring that contract, it started later this summer on that one. Eighteen is to award the lowest responsive responsible bid to Yankee Clipper. For our annual road payment mark. So that's for Center Line and Midline Strike. On the count.
Great, okay. Any questions?
Just, did we find? Uh, regarding this email from earlier, the gentleman on Johnson Plank Extension, is that a? Did we, did you forget an answer on that yet, on whose responsibility the road is?
I don't know, I saw the email that I sent to my highway superintendent, I did, and that was a few minutes before I left to come here, so I do not have an answer, but. Before the meeting, when the meeting's finished, I can make a phone call.
I have a question, is it journalized? What, it's an extension, isn't it?
I didn't know why, I didn't have a chance to check, maybe Gary can tell you if this road is in the county, you know. Gary Schaefer, uh, Engineer's Office. See, this is such a Johnson Plank that goes east off, goes on Warren, you know, that's not a properly dedicated accepted road, it's not in our road inventory.
Dedicated, yeah, that's what I thought.
I'm sure this is why there's an issue.
If there is one.
Sometime for that. Or I responded to some, I mean, Barry, I didn't confirm that.
It's, yeah, yeah, because we had that come up.
So, but, so whose responsibility would it be if it's not?
It's private road, it's not a road, it's private.
So it's not the, is that a or the county?
That's correct.
That's the case.
And it has to be brought.
We, we discussed before, though, etc. Right, that's, that's always an issue, uh, it's an issue in townships too, where. Um. It, it, it could be a judgment call whether, but then you are gonna plug gates to do. Everybody that's not dedicated, isn't it?
So who files the road with? Well, I mean, we wouldn't, yeah, so. I mean.
That's the issue.
Can you check and see if the township files, I mean, how do they?
Township doesn't plow it either.
This has been an ongoing matter for sure. Since I've been in the office. So there's no road maintenance at all? Unless it's done by private. Private, right, yeah, that, that's, that's my point, yeah.
We get the same thing in Johnson, there's a road up there in Johnson, the same thing where a guy. He handles it himself, and.
Hubbard Township too, believe me, as a trustee, I, I went through a lot of that. Where they're not a dedicated road, and unfortunately, due to the cost. Factor of making it a dedicated road, usually, the homeowners won't. Participate. And so.
Dave, is there a way? Can we make this some more priority in your office, work together with our office, and see, find out how many roads we have like this? And see if there's something we could do to either get these roads dedicated, or come up with some type of a. M O A or agreements, these people aren't left hanging like this, when there's twelve houses on here, if an ambulance does need to get down this road. Um. Yeah, we, we need to fix this, man, and we need, there's, there's gotta be some way we can get involved and. And fix this problem between your office and our office, um, we gotta help these people.
We can certainly look at that between my office and your office, um, there are other. Roads that have bridges on them that are privately owned. Bridges, when I was here in oh nine, we had a road on Niles, Vienna Road. Where. It's a. Road, it's a private drive that services five houses, and there's a bridge between Vienna Road and those five houses. And, uh, the bridge, the safety forces refuse to go across that bridge. I couldn't do anything about it, it's not a public, a public bridge or a public road. You can ask our prosecutor's office what liability that the county would have if the county actually. Was servicing private roads with public money. I think there'd be us.
That's what I'm saying. Let's do something about that to get those roads dedicated, donated to us or purchase them or do.
Like Commissioner Bernard said, you'd wanna make sure that they're built to county standards.
Well, that's always the issue.
Yeah.
They don't wanna pay.
Yeah.
To bring it to, to, up to par with what is code, you know, and. Commissioners, you know, I, and I agree with what you're saying, however. Then you open up the floodgates. You do one, you're gonna have to do all these other roads and I, I don't know that that's gonna be, you know, I mean.
I'm just saying it's twenty twenty-five. Let's make an initiative to get this done and not.
We could at least. How many we have?
Well, I mean, if you wanna do it through a assessment district. Built, rebuilt these roads and assessed property owners adjacent to the, to the road, that's one way. Do you wanna use county money to do it? I mean, that's a question whether you can legally do that.
Commissioner Bill Danso, Prosecutor's Office, this is a thing that we've been through extensively over the past fifteen, twenty years with various roads like this and. What we have to consider is, you know, again, just, just like that, if it's a private road, like the engineer said. There are assessment procedures that the residents on that road can use to improve the road and then it can be accepted into county system. We could certainly explore if the commissioners want to go around and, and just dedicate and accept various roads in the county. We could talk about that. Uh, and, and what legal process would be required. The thing that you're gonna have to keep in mind is. Uh, you know, I don't know what the current cost per hundred yards or whatever a road is, but it, it's probably very expensive when you talk about. Preparing the appropriate base, when you talk about what's all required to, to really get those roads ready for. You know, even moderate traffic, I think that the standards are pretty high and you're talking a lot of money, uh, if you look around the county and all these. So it's something that, that we can certainly have a discussion about, but I think that. You know, the fact is that cost has been a major consideration on some of this over the years. And again, the consideration of are we using public resources on private roads? Or are we taking them over as a part of the county road system? Or is the township taking them over as part of the township road system? Because that's an option too. Traditionally, a lot of our townships have faced the same thing. They hasn't, they haven't been real excited about that i- in some of the places. You realize it's expensive. So uh, these are things that we can certainly talk about, but there's a lot of. Moving parts when you talk about adding more pieces to the county road system. So we'll, you know, again, I can forward the board some things over the years that we've done on that.
I agree.
Well, we just, we're not gonna be the board to kick the can down the road and we either deal with this or we ignore it and.
Well, no, I don't think, I don't think we should ignore it. I think what we should do is explore how many roads we do have and then. You, you could come up with a number about what that would, but that would tell cost wise.
May be the trustees that need to look.
In the township, because we don't.
Roads are.
Yeah, we have, I, I mean, just as a former trustee, I know the amount of roads just in. The township of Hubbard that we have that are not dedicated.
Yeah.
That similar issues, so. You know, it could be quite expensive to deliver gravel or aggregate or whatever you're putting on those roads, you know. You know, I, I mean. You know, I, I don't know any other, you know, if the homeowners are willing to. Come up with what it takes to get that road dedicated. One thing, but Commissioner to use. Public or taxpayers' monies to fund these kind of things, I don't think that would. Apply, I really don't think.
Well, and, and I agree, you know, look at the roads in the past. We made people. You know, uh, upgrade their roads before we accepted into the road systems. Now all of a sudden, we're not gonna do that.
Well, let's get it to where we have first of all, at least, see how many are out there like this, there's a handful.
Or do, do you even know how you would go about finding out how many roads you have?
Well, the way I would do it is I probably have townships, townships to let us know. What, what roads they have. And if we have county road, right, well, if there are extension of county road, that's not. A road, you know, it's not a dedicated road. We may know some of that. You have Gary and Ken, Gary Schaefer and Ken Stassen from my office, who've been there for twenty-five years. May know some of that, but the bulk of it's gonna come from townships, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have roads up in Meskow and Farmington.
So I, I mean, we're all receiving phone calls on, on what the. All of us are going up ahead of those roads, I mean. We could open a big can of worms.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I went into that, I mean, this is an issue.
Opportunity of the commissioners that you would like me to. Overseal. I will do that if you're asking, I mean, I, I will do that if you're asking.
I, I would like for you to do that. I think we can, we can help in any way if you want, if you need to. Anything from us, or you wanna form a.
They're gonna need funds.
Panel or something.
Well, well, I'm not gonna do any work. I'm just gonna look into what roads may be out there and it'll be a questionnaire to trustees and then. Look at what we can from our record, but it'll be a questionnaire.
At least it, at least it's a good gesture to find out what, you know.
It just sounds like that's just not a viable excuse. Well, it's not ours, it's theirs, it's not theirs, it's a secret, it's a law, excuse. You know, I don't want that answer for any.
Maybe they need to know it's not the trustees and it's not.
And, and maybe they do need to know, like this here.
Yeah.
This guy doesn't know. He says county's telling him it's the township, township's telling him it's the county. So someone needs to get with this guy and say, here's what it is, if that is the case.
Yeah.
Let's find out for sure that that's the case on this stretch where he's talking. And if that's the answer, that's the answer. But we should know how many more people are like him they're gonna call. I, I know I've had at least three or four calls in the last year and a half and there's a guy, I, I can't even, every single time I go. To eat at the Moose in Mac, I get, this old man comes up to me and says he's still plowing the road himself, he's still maintaining himself and. It's in Johnson, it's the same situation where, and, you know, he's, he's got a legitimate. Great, that he's doing a lot to make this township look better and nobody's even thanking him or giving him any recognition.
It, it should be at a local level. My thing should be at township level, but this is addressed. But you know, if you could even want. Me to make that contact with township, so now have them address it, the lead report to you.
Another idea too is if, if we find out what it is and address it, Da- David, um. Once we find that out, maybe the commissioners can then explain to, you know, to those residents. On those roads, listen, this is what it is. It's not the engineer, it's not the county, it's not the township, it's not the commissioner. Uh, this is the way that that works and at least they know, you know, how that works. This is the reason why we're getting these calls. I've had calls myself that I answered to. And knowing in my township what to explain to them if it's not a dedicated road or, so, you know, they, they need to know that, but. Okay, thank you. Planning Commission's not here. Oh, you are here, yeah, you snuck in.
Thank you. Uh, nineteen is to approve an agreement with Neighborhood Development Services. This is in coordination with Community Housing Impact and Preservation Grant. Uh, they do inspection services when we get a fault by household, they go inspect the house, develop the scope of work. Bid out to the pre-qualified contractors, um, help us through that process. If you wanna point out, the term is December first, twenty twenty-four. Obviously, we don't really like to do retroactive contracts, but. This has to be for the uh, term of the grants, uh, which started December first, even though Commissioner Hernandez didn't get it till. End of March to sign, it still started December first, so um, we have to make sure that contract is in accordance with the grant dates. Um, and number twenty is again, Community Housing Impact and Preservation, we have a title agency, uh, do. Title work on every income qualified house, make sure that they are the sole owner, there's no other leads. Uh, items like that. This is one of the standard operations of grants. Um, and this is an agreement to have them as the lowest invested to do the title work for that grant. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Um, we're gonna move on to Gary Newbrow, Sanitary District.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer, uh, item twenty-one. It's a private extension. Uh, of the Weatherfield Township on uh, Alstom Road. And actually twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-three are all related. Uh, there's a property owner that wants to extend the water and sanitary sewer. It is property, I'm depending on the one property and it's about two hundred fifteen feet of water to provide.
Item twenty-four.
You're also the county.
Yeah, no, that's the county. He has an agreement with us, he gets the engineering done, gets the EPA PTI. Builds it, after it's done, we go out, we inspect, well, we inspect it whilst we have built, then we accept it in the county's water. Uh, item twenty-four, this is uh, the Meadowbrook area, this is phase three. Uh, we are submitting the PTI for that versus a night line extension of the design drawing. And we wanna get that PTI for this one before I nominate him in September, when it's time to get this PTI application in. If that PTI proves that when I put the nomination in September, we can go that principle. Phase, uh, that'll be phase three of the Meadowbrook project, um, a total of four days. This is going right according to schedule and how we're gonna knock out four days.
We did have a call, um, about an extension, uh. Woman, I can't remember the road that it was, Gary, you had a phone call, she had four hundred feet. She needed extended part of the project, um. What was that?
Was it Sharon Drive?
Yes, Sharon.
Okay, yeah.
Did you, uh, I, I mean, she, did you mention to her it was like eighty thousand dollars to get her sewer?
Right, I, I, I explained all that to her. And it's, it's a shame, I really wanted to extend that all the way down to her, but there's this two or three hundred. Quick gap with nobody else there.
Right.
And. On that Sharon Drive project, because of the employee plastic construction, since I originally put in the ARP application. We just don't have enough funds to be able to work through that.
And most of those homes are they closer in proximity? This one's.
Oh, yeah.
Way outside.
Yeah, there, you go from one ninety-three up to the hole to the school. Between the school and one ninety-three, there's these other houses, then you go to the school. I, I think it's. Problem.
Yeah.
And there's nobody else there connected either.
Yeah, eighty thousand's quite a clip to.
Yeah.
For her to do that, but um, I had a conversation with her, I told her to talk to you and.
It's a shame, I talked to her too and I wish you could have. Lose that, as a matter of fact, I used to have the engineering done on it, it's one of my options, got available funds, but we just. Really wanted to get it to her, but we can't afford it.
Okay, I'll let her know, I'll wait back.
Gary, did you get a? Any follow-up or any call from Portage County regarding the racetrack and Nelson's Ledges?
No, I, that's for something with it.
Right, uh, Commissioner in Portage County called, they want water. To Nelson's Ledges Racetrack where they have the, they do high performance. Indy cars, things like that. The gentleman, uh, Mr. Ross owns the track and owns the testing facility there. And Portage County said there's no way they can get water from where they are. The closest water source would be in Trumbull County on the border. We have water up to the county line and they wanna know if we can enter a partnership to extend water. From our line into Portage County and that he would be a customer of ours, even though it's Nelson Ledges.
Yes, I would uh, definitely entertain that. Once we finish this uh, state road regionalization project. Yes, I could sell more water out of that system, Portage County and the federal.
Well, they said that they, they use a ton of water there for the track and to keep the dirt down and stuff, I guess. Um, and there are houses along the way that they said they would sign off to make them Trumbull County customers, even though they're in Portage County, do it.
And they will pay for the project.
Uh, they, it would be. Private investment, private investment in the project to get the water there. He needs it that bad.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll put you in touch with the contact that I had, that I thought they're gonna reach out, but.
Where, where does the water end now?
It's running on five thirty-four, so I'm not exactly sure where. So you got two and a half miles from five thirty-four over to. Uh. Uh. If it's not more north.
Yep.
Is, is it more to the west of Suddington?
More west, yeah, it's.
Well, I, I know it's in Portage County, but.
So in three oh five.
As far as north, south, is it west of Suddington or west of Farmington or west of Braceville? Which one would it be?
Well, depends on what part of Suddington you're in. It's actually be like seven, like four twenty-two, it would be. It would be like a little bit south, but a lot of west of four, of four twenty-two.
Okay, then we may be a little bit closer than five thirty-four.
If you're at five, if you're at five thirty-four and four twenty-two, it would be, you go south.
It's a crossroads where they cross diagonally. Okay, we have water there.
At five thirty-four and four twenty-two.
Yeah. That's what we call the crossroads.
They said it was gonna be almost a two mile stretch, but they, if they just wanna pay for it.
Okay, if it's only two miles total.
That thing is more than that.
Okay, well, they're paying. You know, five miles, okay.
Yeah, if you can get the water line there, yeah, that, that whole part there.
Well, we, we have this one, the line in four twenty-two and five thirty-four now. It says we need that uh, pump station built on statements out there in state road to be able to. Get us more additional supply to be able to do that.
Suddington School, are they going to water on?
Yes.
So it's passed there a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Um, Mark's here, but I could read through this, Sheriff.
Here.
I don't know, Mark, if you wanna, you want me to read through this or?
You can read, I mean, the PTI question.
Um, we'll move to twenty-five, uh, the authorized Trumbull County Commissioner's clerk to advertise for seal. Proposals for substance abuse treatment services for the Trumbull County Jail. Um. I don't know if you have anything to add, Mark, but.
That's, that, that would be, that would be Major Bobby for that.
Major Bobby, um, this is uh, to add services from the grant that we received from the Attorney General. So we already have the money, okay, just have to uh, solicit bids for somebody to provide the services. So we already have the money, we're not asking for money. Um, just need to find a provider to come in and do it.
Can we add that into the, into the proposal in here, what we vote on, the. The utilizing funds from the grant in the item number itself?
Yeah, that's, that was in the, the proposal that I, that I submitted. Give that to me?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't say it in here though, it just, there's nothing near mentioned where the money comes from. That's why I'd like to see that added in here.
Just add our.
Yeah, I can add that in there.
Lisa can add it.
So, and, and that was based on, I, I got an opinion from. Prosecutor's Office about uh, whether we could just add that on to the current providers, but. They, they suggested that we go ahead and do that and I think that's, that's what we do.
Okay, and then uh, agenda item twenty-six, um, that's the evidence room. Andy, Mark, do you wanna talk about that?
So the project includes, uh, we talked about.
Name, name, word, meaning.
Chief Financial Officer, Sheriff's Department. So this is um. This is to get sealed bids for the uh, complete renovation of the evidence room. Security structure, new walls, doors, sprinkler systems. Um, the commissioner has toured our evidence room before and it's basically a shambles. We can't contain and lock it up properly. There's no security system in there, there's, there's no separation of the evidence in there. We don't have uh, adequate shelving to uh. Put everything away properly, so this is to, uh, it's over the seventy-five thousand dollars, so. We're putting out, you know, bids to uh, to bid on that to.
We've been discussing this for months.
Yes.
Commissioner, one thing in this though, in this, it says. Uh, walls, doors, sprinklers, system, shelving and surveillance along with a complete audit of inventory and weapons. We don't need to have that in there. You guys are gonna do that. We're not gonna. Put a bid out for someone to inventory your guns and evidence.
Well, that, that, that's, that's done through an audit company that, that's part of the subcontract. I mean, that's something we cannot. Do, that's, that's an int- very intense thing and it's part of.
But it's not gonna be the same people that build the sprinkler system and this, this here is for.
Oh, it'd be a subcontractor on.
Well, you need, we need to still like, cause right now it looks like we're putting a bid for somebody to bid on. Building the room, doing all this, then inventory and auditing the weapons, same person.
Separated?
Yeah, that has to be separated somehow.
Okay, I will.
Bill Danso, Prosecutor's Office, do you guys have a scope of work prepared for this yet or is that something that you guys are still working on?
No, there's plans.
Is there plans, okay, I, yeah. We can help look at those too if need be to help. Kinda itemize what needs to be done for the bid, that's not a problem. kind of itemize what needs to be done for the bid, that's not a problem, I don't think that came over to us yet.
No.
And, and I would think also, a gentleman, that whoever's gonna do an audit of the inventory and the farms that are in there probably specialized somewhat, it's not gonna be over seventy-five grand for somebody to do that, so that may not even need a bid, that might just be finding a specialist that could come in and do that without even putting up the bid on something like that.
Okay, yeah, it's not, it's, it's not, it's, it's, uh, I think it's forty-nine, fifty, uh, so.
Then because of evidence, you, you're gonna need your staff involved in the process itself, so it's gonna be, a majority of the work's gonna be you guys.
But, so, okay, so this, all right, so then this, then this would be everything minus that, right?
Yeah. So, just to be clear, then, we're, we're, we're gonna separate these?
So we're just gonna, I'm gonna separate, uh, the audit, that's all that's coming out of.
Okay.
You know, everything else is correct.
All right, Mark, thank you, yes, Lisa.
Where's the money coming from?
That's coming.
This is coming out of the first two fifty, we approved initially with the one million, with the million and million, out of the million we set aside for sheriff, the other million we did, we, we earmarked two fifty for safety, security, this room was, was the main focus of that first two fifty, and then we had two fifty of it was for security of all county buildings, that's what started the conversation with us on security of all the county buildings, not just the evidence room, but there was up to two fifty earmarked just for this with that evidence room.
Excuse me, Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office, I have a plan for the actual, uh, security. We can take a hundred ten thousand from our small capital improvement fund and use that, therefore, we would only need like seventy-five thousand out of the contingency fund. Not two.
Well, you know best.
Well, we don't have to make that determination.
No, no.
And I would say with this, let's use the fund, and then what you have there, we use for the security of the other buildings that we have.
Yeah.
But this specifically Sheriff's Department, you know, we, we said right from the get-go that we need to use the money for this.
Okay. Here, I think I'll turn it over to you, because you know most about this.
Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office, um, Commissioners, every two years, we it was once a year, and we ended up extending it to two-year, uh, contracts for waste collection for our buildings. And I have a spreadsheet for you all. But look and see the difference between twenty-three to twenty-five and twenty-five to twenty-seven. And I did my homework, and I looked into, I looked into Republic Services. If you look at this spreadsheet, for the increase, it's four point two two percent. If we went through another company for waste collection, such as Republic, it was a ten percent increase. So my recommendation is we stay with the city of Warren for sanitation services for the addresses listed.
Yes, well, I would agree with that, if it saves us money, for sure.
Unfortunately, it has gone up. You can see, I listed them out, so that you could see some have, have gone down, but some have gone up. Unfortunately, I tried to get, I tried to do just in a one-year extension, like prices that they were, but they didn't like that.
This is a two-year?
Yes.
Um, no, that's okay, Bill Danso, Prosecutor's Office, this is a contract we used to actually bid out, and we let vendors bid per location. And it got to be very cumbersome, because some, some places won't pay, you know, for example, a trash compactor service, that would have to be somebody else. Some people wouldn't grit and scream from the sanitary engineer's office, so what ended up happening is two or three different vendors, four different vendors would bid, and then they were managing, your office was managing all those multiple people, and it turned out that just as an aggregate back then the city of Warren was very cost competitive as a whole, with kind of piecemealing things out. And because it was another governmental unit, there was no requirement for competitive bidding, uh, so, uh, you know, that's just that's how we got here, just so you guys know that there's always been a little bit of a review of how those prices compared out there, and we've always tried, and I, Sharon, her predecessors have always tried to figure out where it was gonna give you the best value overall on this, with the most ease of administration also.
Was the former contract two years?
Yes. Prior to, prior to that, we were, we were doing like one-year contracts, and it, and it just, it wasn't it wasn't great, because a lot of times they wouldn't even raise it, it would be the same, so then they started doing two-year contracts, which is, is most appreciated.
My question is, we have the old Wayne Building and the Bell from Chestnut.
Yes.
Do we still do a trash pickup there?
We still use them, in case there's overflow from somewhere else, maintenance will take the, the trash there, and if you look back behind the buildings.
Is that necessary, though? I mean, one building isn't there, and the other one's closed.
Well, we had intended on Chestnut being filled, unfortunately, that did not happen.
So why would you, I mean, we can all.
I, I think we need, I think we should pull the dumpsters, or we can always add them later if something was in there. They might just be opening the door up for neighbor trash too, from neighbors dumping stuff in there. There's nobody in the building knowing you guys.
Daryl, I, I'd like to get your opinion on what, are these dumpsters full, or are they just?
Daryl Dunnigan, uh, facilities. I don't think we should have anything at the, at the Chestnut location. Um, the Wayne Building location, though, they do have the farmer's market that goes on, so that may present some trash for that.
And we do watch that, because people have tried to dump there, but we watch, and we'll look at the cameras, and they will have to pay for that. They're, they were told, city of Warren was told, do not take furniture from there.
Is that the only one that you see, Daryl, that you would suggest?
Yeah, having glanced, that's the, that's the two that would probably be the minimal, uh. Yeah, definitely the, the Chestnut location, we're, I mean, we have enough trash capacity here with five pickups a day for the maintenance area, so.
And the Wayne one, do we need any yard money for them to keep it here?
I don't know, but just.
Used to take all the excess there, so I don't know, you'll have to tell me.
I haven't been having excess trash bits that this area isn't, you know, the admin dumpster isn't handled.
So do you think it's, needs to be smaller?
We could reduce it.
Or it's also right now three times per week, where many of your others are one or two times.
We can do one.
Yeah, do, do four yard once a week, just like Board of Elections and sanitary engineers.
And, and the Wayne, we only do that for the summer, right? You don't need it in the winter or anything.
So for right now, I'd say do four.
One time a week?
Once a week, yeah.
We can do that.
So I save it a ton, right, right observation. And while we're on trash topic.
Penny Savins at the chair.
That's right.
I get a, I get a call from, uh, Eddie Colbert. Uh, Safety Director, Service Director in Warren, about mowing next to the courthouse, apparently, there's this, we're supposed to mow part of, even to the back of the courthouse, and they mow everything beyond that. But he proposed for us, he said he'll have his guys mow the whole place across the street if we pick up the trash cans on this side of the street.
We'll take that, Dale, we'll take that.
He understood, you know, we're, I told him, you know, we're, we're low on staffing with maintenance right now, especially in mowing, and he said, if his guys are doing it anyway, it looks kind of crappy, if we do it one day, they don't do it for two more days, so they'll handle that, but we, everything on this side, so the trash can on the corner for the stone building, trash can in the corner here, in front of our building, if we can maintain that, then he said, we'll go to wash for now.
Commissioners Alex Stephen Jones, Russian Resources Department, we have tried twice, uh, so currently this building maintenance department has two full-time groundskeepers, they're down to one, they have been down to one, we have one who's out on eight, um, expected medical leave, we have posted that temporary bid twice with no while we had bids, um, but we do test these qualified bidders, as we talked about with the county's payable position. Um, and nobody is deemed, has been deemed qualified to drive the type of machinery that we need to do in, uh, with this specific job. Um, and beyond that, we posted it a second time after we deemed nobody was qualified, and nobody did. So it's a pay range four, um, you're not gonna get a ton of, you know, people bidding on a pay range four. Um, our lowest pay range in this county is a three, so again, um, we are literally down to one groundskeeper, I'm not making any excuses, but I just want the Board of Commissioners to know HR has worked with the building maintenance department to try to get somebody temporarily into that position, and it just has not worked for us, unless we were to hire a third groundskeeper, which is not at all what I'm proposing by any means, because again it's a, you know, it's Ohio, I mean, we really only have great weather three or four months, and the rest of the year, they're helping shovel and snow, uh, box moving, stuff like that. Um, but I, I would just basically say, just know that we are down to one groundskeeper, and it will be that through the summer, unfortunately. Uh, this employee is not due back again until at least August is what we're being told up right now.
You know, Commissioners, while we're on the subject matter, it's not on the agenda, but Diane Jerk, they sent, you know, from Senior Services, there, there's a lot of problems with grass cutting that are seniors, ninety-year-olds, they can't I don't know what's going on there, but I, my understanding is it's a seventy thousand dollar allotment for, uh, comfort care.
For a year for mowing and snow removal.
So, what do we do about that? I mean, I'm not sure that I, I know that we had discussed something with the Sheriff's Department, but I don't know if this is Senior Services supposed to handle all this, or what, I'm blind to, but we begin a lot of, a lot of emails concerning our elders, you know, some in their nineties that can't cut grass, that the grass is up to their needs.
Yeah, I, I think that's something she had asked for a meeting with us and her board. They allocate what percentage they spend to transportation, what to healthcare, what to senior centers, and then whatever's left, which was only like seventy grand this year for mowing, and I think we need to look into that, we need to meet with them, we need to get them to loosen up their budget a little more on that, because that is something, senior centers are great, but we don't want seniors throwing out their houses and fine, because they're not mowing their grass, I mean, that's, that's gotta take a priority from someone going doing artwork at a scope center or something, so we need to, I think we need to meet with them to try to get them to reallocate those funds a little more, because we are getting those calls, and those, to me, those calls are just as important as someone needing a ride to get groceries, as somebody maintaining, keeping rats and stuff out of their yard.
All right, we'll have to set up that meeting, discuss that.
She had asked for a meeting, I think Mr. Bird asked for the meeting to give us the dates, I submitted the date, I was available, and hopefully we can come to an agreement on a date and sit down with them to stress them from our end, here's the complaints we get, what can we do about it?
Yeah, because they will get fined. And, you know, by these townships or cities, or wherever they're at.
Hopefully, they won't do that, especially.
Yeah, you would hope not, but.
No, but it does invite rodents, and especially in Warren.
It needs to be, we need to address that issue.
Okay, um, so we have.
So what we're saying is, uh, you're, you're down to an employee, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna be able to handle it?
In and out of the raindrops, we're, we're doing, doing okay, the grass doesn't look great, but it's been raining a lot, so, um. Until then, we can fill in with a maintenance person as, as we need, but then the work orders then suffer from that, so it's, it's just a balancing act.
I have one other maintenance thing, if I could, for a second, um, Daryl. We have this afternoon lead that inspects kind of what gets done. When we first picked the position, we had discussed, we had discussed, she would have her own area of assignment, work till seven, and then go and inspect after that. From what I've been told recently, not so much complaints, but people reaching out saying she doesn't have an area of assignment, and she inspects all day and doesn't have an own area that she actually cleans, and there's been instances lately where she's coming to people at the end of the night and said, you gotta go back and pick this piece of trash up, wipe this smudge off the mirror, do this, do this, and it sounds like she's spending more time documenting what people aren't doing, rather than just doing it and saying, you, you missed this, this, and this, and it seems like it's starting to get irritating to some of the afternoon staff a little bit, that she's not cleaning herself, and on days off, they're, they're moving shifts around to make up for people that are off, and that could be something where she should jump in and actually do the work if someone's off that day, and then go inspect after seven. Inspecting what everyone done is the least of the priorities, I would think, getting the work done first should be the top priority. But that's something, I know you weren't here when we came up with this position or this thing, you kind of came right into it at the same time, but I, I just want to bring up in front of Alex, who kind of crafted that idea. I, I think that lead should be, have her own area of assignment, or be filling in for people on day off, that should be her prime consideration is that. And then, at the end of her shift, checking on everybody else to make sure everything was done. You know, checking at the beginning to make sure there's someone everywhere, and then checking at the end to make sure the work got done. So, if, just for what it's worth, we can just like, crack down on that a little bit, or reassess that a little bit, I think it'll make everybody happy, better. A little more on.
Daryl Harland, Alex Stephen Jones, Russian Resources Department, I need to, uh, I have the job description, job description was pretty clear. Uh, it is still thirty percent the work of the work, um, it is a need, so therefore, they are still a working employee. And we did sit down with that set employee in the very beginning, absence of not having a department head at the time. Um, no, we did say it should be a minimal, uh, you know, veterans building, you know, a building that it's not you know, obviously, a full administration building by said person's self, that would be extremely unfair, and then just still expect them out of here and elevate only one step to do then additional supervisory skill set. But, um, yeah, the, the goal was, however, and I, I don't the intent of that position was to also try to hold people accountable somewhat, though, to Commissioners, so, you know, obviously, we had I don't want to go, you know, we're moving forward, we're getting better, we're getting, we're revising things, but in the past buildings were not clean properly, um, so if this person is just doing their job and holding, you know, trying to hold people accountable, that is part of what this job was expected to do. So, again, I mean, if you're leaving smudges behind, you might want to clean up your smudges before you walk.
I understand, it's just common sense wise. You don't send someone back to go pick something up that you saw that you could have picked up yourself, and then just said something about it.
I just don't want to also not, you know, I don't want to be counterintuitive, although either, it sounds like she is trying to do, you know, to elevate that position and do what we've asked her to do somewhat, I mean, we have department heads now, so I'll leave it up to you guys, uh, you weren't there when the position was created, but, um. That, I will say that cleaning has become a lot better, since we have had this position in place, and since we have had the correct, you know, um, department head and structure and hierarchy, so we also have to let the hierarchy try to work itself out too, and not have people going above and beyond to Commissioners, there is a chain of command too, that we need to probably make sure, reiterate, go to your supervisors, go to Harland, go to Daryl, let's find her there, um, and hopefully, they can fix these things.
Finally, they got to that level yet, or they didn't want to tell, but at the same time, they were told, oh, I don't have to clean anything, that's, my job is to inspect.
Yeah, that would not be the case, yeah.
That's not the case, that's, when we hired the position, it was to clean, and then
Yeah.
have a little free time to do that.
I agree.
Okay. Um, we do have, um, Truma County Fairgrounds here, with Mike Slawinski concerning poles, Barry's here, Mike, do you want it, or Barry, I don't know, either one?
I'll start. Commissioners, this is an ask, expense of ARPA money that was left over from the four-H building. So the funding source is ARPA, and this is part of the, the public address system, so these are nine telephone poles that'll extend that to Barry, Sherish, Barry expanded upon that. And this is for CLR to, to, to install these poles for this public address system that we previously had, had awarded to a separate contract, this is just to extend the the sound system, and there was a question about whether the poles were delivered there already, and, and the fair boards here, they can answer that question, that, that came from last work session about, hey, the poles are there, how did that happen, we haven't, we haven't approved this yet, and, and that question can answer today.
Yeah, and I get, I guess that was the only question anyway, Barry, I don't know if you, you explained to me, and I, and I understand what you had said.
All right, Barry Brown, Truma County Fairground President. CLR has, uh, if the job gets awarded, he's the one gonna put the poles in the ground. He purchased the pole himself, he brought the paperwork to verify that he paid for him himself with a check. He asked me prior, he said, I got the truck coming by here, I can get a discount on delivery, do you care if I drop the nine poles on the ground? Take the rest on my other job site, if the job don't come through, I'll come back and pick them up. So, he paid for it, had nothing to do with us, and they're sitting out there on the ground just waiting to be put in, and it will extend it into the campground, the horse area, there's gonna be a couple down by the grandstand. We just want a hump to get this thing in before, prior to the fair, so, safety reasons. We can warn everybody of tornado, bad weather, of course, it never rains, so we get a fair.
Okay.
Mike Slawinski, Truma County Fairground. To be clear, that wasn't CLR's truck, that was a drop shipment from the manufacturer.
Right.
So they had, it was a larger order, this was just part of a larger order, and they had asked the fairground, can we, can we store them there? And that was how they ended up there.
Yeah, and then it wasn't approved, then they would be.
No poles are set, they're still laying on the ground.
If it wasn't approved, they would have been taken out.
Yeah.
All right, okay, well. Commissioner, you, you had brought up some. Make sure you, you had brought up some issue with that, but I, I, you know.
I think.
Commissioners, Jim Taylor, officials of the local council. Um, I do want to commend the sheriff's office. They, they brought in a, um, a request to utilize some of that ARP money. Um, the job hasn't started and so on and so forth. There was a little piece in there that you guys caught and said, hey, you know, take this out. This is the commissioners. You know, you guys are, are, are taking care of the ARP, right? So you're approving that, right? So I think before anything gets done, all them requests should be done before it gets, get given out to bid and everything else to make sure that it is getting bid out correctly.
Well, we did approve the sound system a month and a half ago. Barry was sitting over there, and we even ran it by the legal, uh,
Attorney Rogers.
Attorney Rogers to see if we can appropriate that, the sound. We said yes. We said that found there was only one company that could do that and we had the price of it and everything. So this is something, I was caught off guard with this that I thought we approved this thing like a month and a half ago for them to get working on it. So I don't understand what the issue is with it.
That, there was an addendum to the original resolution, original, original resolution for the four H building, then it was added on for the safety, uh,
Oh, correct. The safety and the.
System and something else. And then it also says in there, other related structures not to exceed eight hundred fifty. So them structures, other related structures would come back or that money would be obviously be able to be utilized by the commissioners for another plot.
Correct.
Okay, so you guys have the ability to change that addendum as well.
That one we could because it was already appropriated and then it was encumbered before December thirty first. That we can, we can use excess money back to the same approved project. And this was, this was an extension of the scope of the original project that was run by Tanya Rogers. She said yes, on this one instance. There were other instances where she said no, like with the command vehicle garage, she said no on that, but with this, she did say yes. And that's all that was for, was that, and then some type of a overhang or some type of a pavilion in front of the grandstand somewhere is what, is what she approved for us to utilize. Anything additional that was left over out of the eight fifty.
And the addend.
Just those two things.
And it says other structures as well. So ones that you guys, uh, now, now, before you guys get approved. Just spend eight hundred fifty entirely to play the resolution for the addend states.
Well, the way I understand, Barry Brown.
I have to read, I have to read that part of it. I know, I know the sounds are was yes.
Four H block was approved before December thirty first to Tanya. Second thing was eighteen thousand for the pig pens. And then we had the, uh, sound system. And then the leftover money goes to the vegoing behind your grandstand, all pre-approved before December thirty first. So it's under eye.
That's the my.
There's two, there's two addends on the December fourteenth and December eighteenth.
Well, there was the, uh, the pig pen was the first one. That, that was, that was done months prior.
Yes.
And then we, as this board, after January first, did the sound system, which was sometime early February, late January.
But you're still having it on the agenda to explain it, right? On the, for the eleven thousand.
I, I guess now it's coming back up again. I thought we already did this. We have to do it again. I, I guess now we have an exact price maybe of what it is, but we did say we can utilize for that. We had what the estimate was going to be under, that it didn't have to go to bid, that it was specialized.
And as the sheriff did, I'm sure they were authorized to use their ARP monies for certain situations, but they brought it back from you and said, hey.
This, there's isn't ARP money.
It's not?
No, there's just two million from the clerk of courts. It's not ARP. That's the difference.
Just the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Yeah, fairgrounds was ARP, sheriff's farm was not.
Commissioner, I'll be clear. Where, where are we at here? I mean, Jim's bringing up this point.
Well, his, his point is kind of backing our point up a little bit, that we did, we did have an agenda item for this, that we did discuss this. In a sense, this was ARPA funds reallocated within the same thing and approved by the attorney. Sheriff's farm was a separate one, which we, I think we just established that that was ARPA.
So I guess my only question is, is if you have already had it approved in a agenda, then why would it come back?
I, I don't understand why it came back. Yeah, that's, that's my question.
You can see my confusion.
I, 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 I agree.
Commissioners, Bill Danso, Prosecutor's Office. I think that if I'm not misunderstanding, I think it's pretty easy on this, that there were a total of four or five fairgrounds projects that were all kind of contemplated, but we didn't know exactly who the contractors were going to be. We didn't know the exact total cost, but that money had to be allocated for the twenty twenty five four. And so what the, what the board chose to do was allocate eight hundred fifty as an estimate for all of this stuff combined. But there was no award of contracts in it. So what's happening now is as these actual contracts, as the actual quotes come through, the commissioners are approving that actual contract and then deducting it off of that eight fifty that you guys had allocated. Ultimately, what's going to happen at the end is if there's a hundred thousand left, fifty thousand left, two hundred thousand left, that money then is going to be subject to some other reallocation, whether it's further fair board that fits within that memorandum or whether it's something else that Tanya Rogers, Sheriff's been working really, really heavily with. Tanya to try to find ways that the board can use that money, if there's a way to reallocate that to a project, otherwise it was eligible before the end of twenty twenty four. For example, perhaps a main sanitary project or something else, you know.
She literally said it, it doesn't even have to be, if it would qualify under ARPA, initially, we can apply these excess funds to any of, anything that would be applicable under ARPA, such as yours.
Okay, and to go with that, I was in DC last week.
What'd they say?
And when we met with the National Association of Counties, I asked this specific question. And the National Association of Counties talked to the people from treasury and the next day he said, you can reallocate the money if it comes back in, you can reallocate it to other projects that would fall under it. I said, do they already have to be on the list? Do they already have to be existing projects? And they said, it's not going to be a problem. Every county in America is doing this. They're all going to have money left over. They're reallocating. It's not a problem. And I said, can we get that right? And National Association of Counties now is working with the treasury to put that writing that, that there will be that. They also said too, there will be other forthcoming extension things above and beyond, because they understand when you give someone that prices change, things change, people die, projects get cut off and all this money will be in limbo. So there will be further clarification coming up on that, what to do with additional money from Department of Treasury. They don't have it yet now, but they are working on it with National Association of Counties.
Do you have a contact at NACO?
I do. I got the phone number for the person, the deputy, deputy at the treasury, that gave us that and the phone number of the person at NACO. With that being said also, um, Columbia County is in the same boat as us, Porch County, Ashtruda, they're all doing the same thing. They're reallocating it. Their legal counsel, which is different than ours, is having them just do it now, where they are re-appropriating these funds to different areas now. I'm not saying we should do the same as that. We got our own legal counsel that we're paying for a reason, but we need to look into that further. And then the second thing, while we're on that note, we talked about the opiate money, which is something totally different. In Ashtruda County, they got five million dollars in opiate settlement like we did. Their commissioners used that money with their sheriff's department and they started their own drug task force, hired deputies, bought police cars and started their own, left tag, left us in Drum, Drummond County, started their own drug task force with the opiate money. And it's strictly law enforcement and they were given awards by the National Association of Counties for doing that, for utilizing the funds. And they have, Christine or Catherine Whittington has awards that she was given for being creative with that opiate money and spending that money on that project. So we had this discussion before, can we use it for law enforcement? Can we use it with our sheriff's department? We were told no. We need to have somebody here, talk to Catherine Whittington and see how they did it in Ashtruda. Get the documentation that she has and if the sheriff's department was looking to add people, we talked about this, a drug unit, a drug vehicle, a drug officer, whatever. They did it in Ashtruda and it's done and they are, they got awards for it. So we need to look into that a little bit further. They had the same legal tech council that we did. Now, maybe they didn't use the same attorney we had, but the ruling was still the same for all the counties and we were given that money in the past. That from the courts, here's what you can use the money for. They dug deep, they got in the gray area, they asked questions and they spent it on that. So we were told it just has to be for treatment. Ashtruda did it otherwise and they got an award for it.
I would be all for that commissioner. However, once we start that unit, that money's going to run out and then we're going to have to figure out how we're going to finance.
Yeah, we're.
No, no, I understand, but to delegate it, to hire more officers and do all these different things and we got more benefits, we got more, and believe me, I'm the first one to tell you, we need more office, we need more, you know, boots on the ground. Um, I just question whether we delegate those monies to hiring extra and then find out down, you know, ARPA only came once and then we're left with, you know.
Well, it's not all ARPA. It's opiate money. We know we are getting more and more, year after year after year, correct, Alex? Where there's going to be more trucks coming for the next twenty years.
I understand what you're saying, and maybe we should have equipment and things like that more than hiring people.
Yeah.
Correct. They, like I said, they bought vehicles, they bought equipment, they hired personnel.
Which brings up.
They got a drug dog and that all came out of this opiate money.
I do question too, about nine one one. Is it, is it available for nine one one? I mean, we, we are fighting, you know, this is, this is, uh, probably our main contact about overdoses and about to notify the police departments and the sheriff's departments and um, if that's the case, that would be something to look into, I believe.
I'll make the move.
Exactly. And my other comment would be that these, uh, agencies and, and department heads that have this extra ARP money, just don't go out there and spend it to spend it.
Right.
Because, you know, we could take that back and allocate it to areas. So, you know, do we need to send a letter out to these people saying, stop spending, only spend what you were originally allocated in any, um, funds that are available, you know, what we want to know how much.
I think by the law, they have to spend it on what we gave it to them for, and then they have to report it back to sheriff. They have to do an accounting. She has to report it back to the feds.
But, but if they have like, and I don't want to use the fair board, but they're here, let's say they have another hundred thousand left over that they can say, well, we're going to use it for this.
They can't. They can't.
The hundred and five.
That hundred thousand comes back here.
Well, or it'll come to us with a request for.
Yes.
We would have, we would have to vote them.
You know, because, you know, if we can, if we can garnish another five hundred, eight hundred, a million dollars, that's all going to help us with that move. And then if we can use some of that other money, drug money, maybe we can make things happen.
And maybe Commissioners, Alex Dean and Jancy Bush, maybe the opiate monies can't be used necessarily for nine one one, but we do know that the ARPA monies can use for certain things specific to nine one one. So I, I, I think that's a huge end corner. I mean, we, we can, you know, revenue loss, you know, obviously was a big bucket that a lot of things tended to fit underneath. Um.
Not to interrupt you, but you know, if, if we're going to move emergency management out there, he can use that four hundred thousand, he has extra, and then the corner can take over his.
He can. He can't use.
Here's what I'm saying is we need to serve.
It, it's not an applicable project for ARPA. That's why he can't use that four hundred for the building. We've already asked that question.
Maybe we ask them again.
Does it have to be already pre-approved products?
Not pre-approved, absolutely not. It just has to be something that would have felt, fallen applicable.
Yeah.
So there was the.
Can it be used towards a product?
And they have it.
Yo, I think we're getting.
So it has to fit like revenue loss or has to fit.
But, but I know like during, during COVID, that's how highly impacted in a lot of things, we're able to use ARPA funds for that. So could you use the four hundred thousand towards?
She said anything that was under contract as of December, anything that we had, that's the problem. Anything that we had under contract, we can throw it there. But yeah.
But that's when the disagreement comes in. I think, I think we are asking the wrong questions to the right people and the right questions to the wrong people. And we, everything we went by, if we have to look at all that ARPA money we spent, we have an accounting of every penny. Rick's got it right there in front of him.
Yes.
First of all, I was told that that was being on our commissioner's site and there's one page on our commissioner's website. So we need that whole thing on there. So the public can see every penny we spent and where it went. I understand that, but we need to have them put that on there. The whole thing in its entirety, because we've been telling people, go look at the website, you can see where the, where the money went. Because people were saying, oh, you spent it on this, that we didn't spend it on. We need to have it public where people can see it. So IT's got to do that. Secondly, all of that, that we were told what we can and can't do came from the auditor and it came from
and attorney.
The attorney and with your involvement in that too.
I'm just now.
We need to talk to these other counties, uh, Columbia, Mike, Alex said, give him a call and he'll tell you exactly what they did and why they did it and what proof they have to back it up on what they're doing in Columbia. And they, same thing, Portage, Ashtruda, they're all doing it different than we are. I think maybe we're the most correct, but if the whole rest of the world is doing, has more leverage or more liberty to spend it a, a little freer than what we have, then I think we can't shake enough money out for nine one one. And that is something that I realized by not being here last week too. I, I got more heat not being here about nine one one stuff of we, are we moving forward? We've been talking about this for three years before you guys were here. So I'm not, I'm just saying, we started out with this, find the Tacy. Then Tacy had to do a feasibility study. We had to wait for the feasibility study to be done. Then she had to get a, a board, nine one one review board, which we just got at the end of the year. They met in January, I think, was the first time. We had to get their approval to do things, to take the next step. We looked at three or four different buildings. Cortland gave us a resolution and I have a copy of it on our email. We just got it from, uh, Councilman Pecuri in Cortland that says, we want you to come to the, to Cortland. We want you that, here's a resolution signed by the mayor, the president of council and the council members, we want you here. So Cortland's not going in that building. They, they have a resolution saying they want us in that building and he sent the email to us reaffirming what they stated in twenty twenty three, we still want you in this building. You know, because he heard the news or listened to the meeting and apparently there was some talk of maybe Cortland's using it, maybe they're not. The, the tower issues, we've already been over this stuff. We need to advance from where we were and take a step forward because all we're doing is rehashing things over and over again. We're not getting any progress. Right now, we collectively as a board are taking heat on the corner. You know, that, that poor guy in Suddington, they had to do his autopsy last week and cleared out the whole building for a week. Nobody can, can work in Tagore and in the, uh, EMA because they had the smell of what they were doing in the garage out there. We can't have that. And this is only seventy degree weather. Nine one one, we've been talking about it for ten, fifteen, twenty years. When we brought Tacy in, her job was straighten this place out and get us moved. And she's doing everything she can to do to make that happen. We got to do the next step. We got to take, I mean, if we got to borrow money, if we got to take bonds, we need to have this stuff done. We need to move forward on this stuff. It's not going to rain money tomorrow. We need to, we need to just make it happen like every other county does. And when I talked about debt, I brought that question up. We're with all these other seventy five commissioners from all across the state. I found out we got some counties have zero water. Vinton County has no water lines in the whole county. They truck water into people's houses and do like sister and well type things. And they got a business down there. Everybody gets their water being trucked in. So they don't have the issues we have, but they, they said they would love to pay a water bill. They would love to have, have, be able to turn the spigot and have water come from a city system. They don't have it anywhere in Vinton County that way. So we got different problems. Other counties have debt, small counties have debt way beyond what we have and they're tiny little counties. And like, that's what you do. You take debt on, you pay for it. When it's paid off, you move on to the next thing. But you got to keep progressing forward for your citizens. We got to keep giving them the services they, they deserve. And right now I just feel like we're in a little bit of a rut, spinning our wheels, trying to figure out, get our legs underneath us so we can move forward with this stuff. She needs a dog pound. We keep, I mean, I, I, it's almost embarrassing to go to a grocery store and have someone come up to me and say, when are we getting the dog pound? Well, I'm sorry, I know I talked to you three years about it, two years about it and a year ago about it. Then I saw you at a fundraiser about it and it's coming. And I mean, that's getting old. We got to start moving forward.
I'll be serving my comments for now. I could debate a lot of that, but I won't. Very, till we get down to the brass tacks.
Barry Brown, Trump County Fairgrounds. Are we all square on the telephone polls?
We're.
Yeah, we're. Okay. Before I leave, no, that's okay. I like, listen. Just want to mention the week before fairs, I'm looking like beginning of the week before. I'd like to have a ribbon cutting for the new building. Like have all you guys come out. So we're going to be in touch to see what works in your schedule, if it's in the evening or whatever, get the news. The building is looking awesome. Everybody's so pumped.
We'll be there.
Barry, how are we with security? Like Barry, you guys are both there. Are we, we good to go? Are we moving forward on that with enough security?
We've got a meeting every Wednesday. I had to cancel today because I'm down here. We have a meeting every Wednesday. Fantastic so far. I mean, uh, what I like about it, he's new, it's going to be new eyes, so it's not the same procedures we've been doing. No fault of anybody, but with new eyes, you get all kinds of new ideas. So the guy's been great. And, uh, like I said, we cancel, we're going to get John Hickey involved. We're going to get Bizzetta Police out there because we talked before in the past, they weren't welcome on the grounds, inside the fence. We're going to end that. So what I'm saying is like, we have a workshop this weekend. We've got people staying in the campsite. If Bizzetta has an officer out on midnight turn, we were just liking to make a pass through. Well, they weren't allowed before. So we want to get past that. The new guys all for it. So. So we wanna get past that, the new guys all for it, so, yeah, I think it's gonna work out perfect. We got two uh. Security towers, we're gonna put them in our two troubled areas. Board's gonna pay for it ourselves, reasonable cost, fifteen hundred and thirty bucks for two of them. Has a hard drive in it, we're gonna shoot it straight over into the sheriff's department, we're putting in a TV. These towers will be on that TV going across. So as you walk through the grandstand and you look in at the sheriff, you'll see. Showing up on the TV, that should spread like wildfire. So we'll have the two troubled areas covered with these. And I thought it was reasonable, fifteen hundred and thirty dollars, they set them up. And I guess it's gonna be an additional two hundred and fifty to hardwire or shoot it over and get the laptop hooked to the TV. We'll sort that cost, so we don't have any issues. They're gonna bring K nine out, we do have a pass, a, a fair board member. He does private security, they're checking with him with his dogs. And he volunteers time the whole week, so we have a dog here the whole week. So, yeah, great working with them, but just so everybody's up to speed, they only have one person signed up. To work.
So what you're saying is that you're, you've got to improve security because of a different sheriff? That has different.
We're improving the security of the issue we had last year.
Why weren't these other people allowed on, on the grounds last?
You'd have to ask the guy that was in charge last time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because of different sheriff, he's got different.
I'm not here to badmouth.
No, no, I'm not either, I'm just saying.
Policies didn't fit in with what they wanted to do, so, so you gotta do improved policies. That's what we're working on, yes. I want the sheriff, Posetta, to be feel comfortable, it's in Posetta township, that's what's got me confused. And I think they should be able to come and go as they please, they're not asking to shoot the shooting range, they're just asking, you know, they wanna feel welcome and know help us out.
And, and they oughta welcome that.
We're working on that. That's, the meeting was supposed to be today, and we had to cancel. We're gonna bring him in, John Hickey in, get clear the air, make sure we're all on the same page. But I think with Wilson and these new guys, I think we'll be perfect. I mean, I think we were perfect in the past, but I just think with new eyes, you're gonna move, you're gonna see a difference. But we'll be in touch about that meeting, come out, cut the ribbon, I think it'd be fantastic. I'd like to bring every group, because every time I come down here, everybody's super, but I, if it's you guys, I'll be thrilled. It's okay with you, we're going back to work.
And then we will, we have a scheduled hour commissioners meeting at the fairgrounds.
Yes.
On the Wednesday opening, or the Wednesday of the opening.
Right.
And then ribbon cutting for the fairgrounds on Tuesday.
The week before.
Oh, you're gonna do it before or not gonna do it?
We had some discussion, we're thinking the week before the fair, because if I do it on Monday evenings, when I was originally thinking, you got everybody moving in.
Yeah, but don't we have the grand opening of the fair on Tuesday?
But that's in a certain area, we'd have to all go down there to cut the ribbon and come back, so we're thinking the week before.
Just do everything there.
Because that, that's when we're gonna open it up, people are moving, and all the horses and everybody in that area are gonna be in on Saturday. So before they even get to use the new facility for the new fair, we'll have the ribbon cut. That fits you guys' schedule.
Sounds good.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. All right, um. That's all for the agenda items. Michelle, you've had something?
Yeah, I just have, um, I'm just here to um, get approval for um, a temporary transfer in my department. Um, if I can, um, our chief dog warden, Corey Banky, is uh, out for roughly six to eight weeks. Um, so just looking to temporarily fill that position with um, one of my other employees in the department. Um, per HR, just because of the significant, um. Pay increase and um, there are supervisor duties involved with the chief dog warden, they thought that's for, to get approval.
Um, Commissioner Alex DeJonge, General Services Department, unfortunately, when medical things happen. The needle point moves significantly, so even unbeknownst to probably, Michelle. Um, we deal with, again, the workers comp, not to hash out what we did with last week, but. So it's not six to eight weeks, uh, we are looking at mid-August return, which is substantially larger than a temporary transfer. Per your contract is sixty days. That is my concern for this specific position. This would not be considered a temporary transfer of sixty days, this would be larger than a sixty day temporary transfer. With that being said, it, it is completely, but we just wanted the board to make sure that, that you're aware of what you're saying, or this specific temporary transfer. Not only would the p- employee go from a pay range four to a pay range eight. But then additionally, Michelle, you'd have to correct me, because I don't see this on here, they would also go to a pay range eleven when Michelle's not there. So this is a little bit larger than that person who is out, was actually when Michelle's not present. Was the, the assuming position roles of Michelle. So this is taking somebody from a pay range four, all the way potentially up to a pay range eleven. Uh, I, I do feel like it's something that the commissioners, we, HR, we need to make sure that. I just feel like we need to make sure we're vetting everything. I haven't looked at it, my staff has been dealing with Michelle, so in full transparency. They made me aware of what was going on, but you know, obviously, Michelle, I'm so sorry, we're, I'm, yeah, you know what I mean? So I was kind of aware of this, but the more that I had started to look into it, I did have some concerns. Again, not saying we can't do it, I just wanna make sure the board is aware of how significant of a position this is, it's Michelle, I mean, Michelle's position is significant. When Michelle's absent or not there, uh, Mr. Banky was elevated to the pay range eleven to assume those, those duties. So this person would now be taking over for him, which means he would be elevated to those duties as well. I just feel like we really need to make sure, and I, I would have to do a deep analysis, which I haven't looked, I mean, I trust you, you're the department. But I do feel like the board should be a little bit aware, this is not our typical temporary transfer, this is well beyond sixty days. This is, even if it does come back, mid-August is what we're getting from Medco. So I can't go into that too many details, it's, it's, it, you know, again.
So what if she's out? And he's out, then when another person steps up to his and all the way up, that, yeah.
Yeah, this is way larger than just.
Crazy.
You know, this is not just a simple, and I don't mean to minimize, but it's truly, in my opinion, not a just temporary transfer. This is ma- way larger, this is their hierarchy, this is their structure, this is, you know, unfortunately, when you run a small shop. Which is not any fault of Michelle's, but they're very small, I mean, they, minimal. Five employees there on average, they have seven, but again. Any given day, and I looked back, I was starting to kinda start to do this analysis of this, we have people call us sick, we have people on that night, it is what it is. So at any given time, in that dog panel, in that dog pound, there, there's maybe three to four people there on site. You know, they're transferring dogs, they're taking dogs to vet appointments, they're doing things, so I am just a little bit. Again, it, it's your, it's the board of commissioners, it is not my decision, but. I, I do think we need to look at this a little bit more holistically, than outside of just kind of a temporary transfer, I, I don't think it's that. Uh, beyond that, the contract's really clear, anything past sixty days would have to be mutually agreed upon with the union, and I will tell you. I can't, I can't always, you know, know what's gonna happen, but the last time we asked for in the maintenance department, a mutual extension of a temporary transfer, the union denied us. Which means the point would be muted, because we can't, we would only be able to keep them there for so many days, and then we're taking it back anyway, so what are we doing? Um, I'm not against temporary transfers, I think it's a great opportunity for somebody to shine and succession planning and get a little bit more money under their belt. But it just has to make sense for the overall operational, and I just haven't looked at it that far, but I do have, I did have some red flags as I was just kinda sitting here.
Let's see, budget wise, this gentleman, when he's out, is still making us pay, now you're gonna elevate someone to get paid, that's even more budget wise. That we're gonna be costing up what we already gave him for the budget, that's gonna blow the budget right out of the water for fans.
I truly just, I haven't looked at that, so I know, because Commissioner, I just handed this, handed this to me. Like I said, I know my staff's been looking into job duties, and they've been truly pulling the job descriptions and trying to see, you know, what we can do or make it work. Um, but to your, to, to what you just asked, I haven't, I haven't even, of the budget, budget consistency, I haven't looked at any of that, so. I haven't asked her, she hasn't.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
Do we have a timeline that we're looking at, any, any ballpark?
Unfortunately, again, uh, this goes back to a worker's complaint, so obviously the employee was injured, alls I can say is the employee was injured and. What we do need to be, you know, enacted, is day-to-day job description. Um, the claim is, we're not, I'm not gonna get into all of that.
So we need, we either need to hold your table or take it off or something. Unless, or that's the.
Well, I, it's, definitely that's gonna have to happen. My question is, Michelle, how do you manage? Without that position?
Oh, I, I mean, I, I think it's a needed position, I, I think that's why the position was created decades ago. Um, we had agreed, or, or, I mean, when we talked in the office about this. Also, um, I don't think that there would be a need for James to um, be paid a pay range eleven when I'm not there.
Okay.
Um, we had, you know, talked about that, um, because with him being um, the chief, and while Corey is out. Um, that does give him um, supervisor um, duties and um, you know. That allows him also being paid the chief to do the day-to-day operations if I am not there for that day. Um, so we, again, we talked about that, and we didn't wanna go into the pay range eleven um, on that. Um, it's, it doesn't seem like a lot on paper, but it, it really is a lot, the main thing that um. Separates the chief from the deputies is that the chief dog warden is on call twenty-four hours. So now I have somebody in my department that is on call twenty-four hours a day that is not paid for that.
But James' job does say he's on call twenty-four seven.
Only if assigned by the chief dog warden.
It, it, no, it doesn't, it says he's on call twenty-four seven a day, it says.
Is on call twenty-four hours a day when assigned by the chief dog warden, that's the deputy dog warden. I, I have job descriptions here. So I, like I said, I have an employee that is on call twenty-four hours a day, is doing day-to-day. Um, helping oversee day-to-day operations, assigning duties and stuff, and he is not being paid for that. Um, he has went to the union as well, because Article nine, um, temporary transfers and um, vastly local two, four, nine, three, union contract. Specifically says that a department head can um. Do a temporary transfer in their department. Um, I know it says templar- temporarily created positions shall be appointed for a maximum of sixty days. Um, I guess that's kinda um, the timeline on what we're looking for, I guess could be kinda subjective. I don't think um, eight weeks or ten weeks is long term. Um, I think that is a temporary position, um. And, and again, that's just, um, you know, that's just my opinion, I'm just fighting for my employee also.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Michelle, but I mean, I will say, is on call twenty-four hours a day when assigned by chief dog warden.
Yes.
And then the chief dog warden is twenty-four hour, we did check, at least my staff was able to look at that and say, twenty-four hours was definitely in his, his duty, so why can't? I guess what we're saying is, could you not be in, out in lieu of not having a chief dog warden, could you not assign him? Because it is still in his job description to be on duty from, so. Either way, I think what I, I don't, the board can do whatever they choose, we just wanted to make them a best of all of this. Um, however, I do think that before that I'm listening to kind of even just your thought process on this, Michelle, I don't disagree. But you know, you're saying that it would be no more than the eight, we need to get that in an MOE, if we're going to do this, this needs to be mutually agreed upon with the union. I don't want to go back, because I have had this happen multiple times. They may say that, but then when so-and-so says start doing the job. And I mean, I guess you're saying he would still be doing the job of the supervisor, but yet not getting paid that period eleven. We wanna make sure that that's even feasible, I mean.
Sure, I mean, he wouldn't be doing my duties, he would, he would be overseeing the dog panel day-to-day, he would be doing the chief dog warden.
Okay.
Um, you know, just the chief dog warden duties, I mean, and again, it does say in the contract that.
How was this other one, you paid your pay when you weren't there, that if this one's not gonna be doing it?
Yep, good question, that's, um, I mean, Corey, as the, as my permanent chief dog warden, can do. More of what I do.
Sure.
You know, I mean, if that makes sense, um, and it, and it ha- and it's rare, I mean, it, it doesn't happen like a, a lot, you know, I'm not.
I mean, we need to look into that a little bit too, is that something? With department heads. We get a lot of times, Gary's off, other departments could be off, does that mean the other people would get elevated?
They do.
To that pay.
Yeah, they do. When a department do that.
When they're, no, when they're union, I wanna be very clear, so there's, you can't, I'm sorry, I don't mean. I just wanna make sure it's very clear.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the chief deputy dog warden is a union position.
Yes.
So this is the union fighting, so hear me out what I'm saying, the union's fighting, saying when Michelle's not there, and this gentleman's doing more elevated tasks. It is in their contract that they have to quantify how many hours they're doing it, and then they do get paid that shift differential if you go or upgrade. Now, I'm concerned with this position though, that, what she's saying is exactly what I'm saying, I'm concerned, yeah, maybe they had a gentleman's agreement behind closed doors, that. Wouldn't want that elevated pay grade, but we don't know that.
Right, you can follow agreements, we say yes.
There's nothing to stop them from agreeing.
We already had a problem with nine one one and with maintenance, with the same situations.
By any means that we shouldn't, I agree, I think the position is extremely important, I think every position in your, in your organization is important, especially with how minimal staff. Of which you have.
True.
I just wanna make sure it's done the correct way, I did get a legal analysis on it from Clarence Nelson, who does agree. Um, this does not seem to be, I mean, I will read it verbatim, um. The bold italic language which was recently negotiated may cover this type of situation that has not been normal agreed. But it should be posted particularly with uh, you know, Courtney, who asked for the opinion referenced below. This situation is long-term, involves an employee who also covers potentially for a department head, and would elevate an employee. Potentially for pay grades at a minimum, even up to some cases, seven pay grades. At the board's discretion, they could include a posting process. So I, again, I'm not saying, but there could also be somebody out there who, I, I don't know, I just think we need to look at it. Um.
So do, so we're, we're talking about an MOU, we're talking about talking to the union, what, I mean, do we have a couple of weeks? To play with this?
I mean, I think she needs, we'll get on it ASAP, I mean, now that I, you know.
I mean.
We can sit down.
At it, make sure that we're, you know, we're doing it properly. And that, you know, um, the union is aware and from what you're saying.
Yeah, and then maybe just jot up some, you know, that if, if it's gonna be a period J, it's gonna stay a period J, that it's not gonna be for the temporary, short-term. Or, I don't wanna call it temporary, that we know it's gonna go past the six days, we know that, I know that as of right now. Um, like I said, the employee is not even clear to come back until eight, eleven, which is well beyond, since he's been out since May eighth. That's well beyond the sixty day temporary posting. That I wanna make sure that the union's okay with all of that, and then I, I have no points about it. But at the end of the day, um, what I don't wanna make is more grievances for my staff to handle it, so.
I don't disagree with that, Michelle, it'd be a violation.
Yep.
And we'll figure this out, sure.
And as long as the union's amicable, and, and we wanna make sure, by no means are we trying to, Michelle, you know, we just wanna make sure these. Buttoned up, and.
No, no, I, I agree, and, and the union wants to push this through, the union doesn't even think that it needs to be posted according to this.
Yeah, but unfortunately, I have a, a different opinion than the.
Sure, sure, and, and I get that, and I just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a different opinion because said, said same union wouldn't extend a mutual agreement just six months ago, so. I don't believe, I, I would love to, but I'm sorry, the proof is in, you know, they would not extend a thirty day. At the time, the contract was thirty days, we just got this new contract that we ex- that we got to sixty days, which was hard to even do. Um, but, again, it's very clear in here that you can only have them in for thirty days. We had that same example at the maintenance department with the afternoon custodian lead. Um, we elevated somebody to a pay range nine, and the union said no more after thirty days, they took it back. And that left a huge gap in, we can't have, we can't go forward and go back. So if we're gonna move forward, I just wanna make sure that we're crossing all of our Ts and Don'ts, and we're all on the same page, and let's get this done.
Then we went months without anyone, so we had, and we had no, nobody between Bill Hart and, and that, I remember that.
Yeah.
And that's, that is the same union, that was.
It is the same.
President Flanagan that said no.
Oh, I'm not, I wasn't, yeah, uh, yeah, yes.
Keep patient.
Yep.
And we'll get it together.
Yep.
All right. And we're still pushing for a dog pound, you know, you've had meetings, we're gonna. It's gonna work.
Yeah.
Somewhere down there.
Yeah, I sure hope so.
Right.
Commissioners, I have one more question for you guys. I have a US Corrections Prisoner Transport Bill invoiced. And I do not know where to take this to make money, I'm digging like a crazy person trying to find money, and I don't have any. We were cut, the commissioner's office was cut. Two million dollars, and we are tasked with paying for many more things than just our office costs. Were mandated to pay us. It used to be the prosecutor's office would assist us and pay half, they're cut, we're cut, there's, there's no more money. So I need to know where you would like me to come up with three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And that's probably not the last one I'm gonna save.
Well, there's only a couple of places you could take.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
We've already taken carryover monies, I believe, how much, did we take, three million?
I thought it was, was it too many?
Yeah, it was less than two.
One point five?
Yeah. So, yeah, three thousand dollars, that's not that many, take it out of there, it doesn't.
I mean, you could take it out of the.
Contingency.
Our contingency.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I understand, but three thousand compared to us taking a million out before, it's three thousand bucks.
But what she's saying is, is that we're running out.
Also, they're, they're asking, you just had two hundred and fifty thousand for the sheriff's office, or uh, we've done the cars, that was almost three.
That was out of the million.
Out of the million.
Right.
So they're getting, I'm to a lot, at one million dollars. Out of that pot, that was out of the, the three was all out of that one million dollars, so that's seven, seven hundred thousand, correct?
The three, what do you mean, the three, the three, what?
About the cars, two hundred and eighty thousand, I'm just rounding up. Was that out of there?
That was out of there, and the two fifty is out of there, that's a little over, almost six hundred thousand.
Correct.
Out of that.
So here's, here's my question, there's one point seven left now, as we speak.
How do you?
Hydrella, there was another one, I, I've been giving.
I thought Hydrella, we took out the Medicaid. We moved it back out.
No, Valley Vision said that Medicaid.
Right.
So and then you took the, you guys chose to change the Hydrella out back of the.
Okay. Alright, so then we're at six fifty.
And the 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 last one, it was a hundred thousand um promised. It it was just, uh, it was for grant, correct?
Yes, ninety-four.
Ninety-two thousand. That we're getting back.
That.
Possibly. There was another hundred thousand somewhere. It it just keeps.
Also, Commissioner's Director Green is on the phone. She wanted to have, she wanted to give some input on the.
You wanna unmute Julie?
I feel like we should finish this. I don't mean to be.
Well, this is part of that conversation. That's why she's on the phone to be for part of this conversation.
Yeah, start, is it star sex?
Yeah.
Julie, star sex.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my question was regarding the ARP funding. If you want to continue, Cheryl, with what you were discussing, I can wait.
That's what I was saying. I'm trying to, what I'm trying to, I I appreciate that Julie, because I'm trying to butt this up because I'm hearing five hundred thousand to the sheriff's office out of that contingency fund. Plus they got two hundred eighty thousand and then we have this hundred thousand here, ninety-two thousand here. This. I, it's just, it's adding up and it's snowballing. I don't know what you want me to do with that. I have, so thirty-six, thirty-eight, I gotta take it out. So I'm taking that out of contingency. What I'm saying is, is it's dwindling. Every time I I uh, you know, account for something out of that fund, that's a minus. So now, we're at one point seven so far. I had two point three because three hundred thousand. Was always in the commissioner's budget as a contingency in case we had an emergency and we had to cover something. So, we're down to one point seven now.
Sure, if the one point seven, I have support.
Yes.
So that one point seven is a piece of.
The cars. There's another hundred thousand, ninety-two thousand.
Okay, so that's.
I'd have to go get my list to like. Show exactly what I was.
Well, my comment would be, list how much we started with, put it on paper so we can see. How much deduct?
I've given.
Deduct so we we know actually where we're at. We can look at it and then we'll tell you.
For you right after.
Then we can tell you how, what we want to do.
Well, there's, what I'm saying here right now, three thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars, there's nowhere for me to take it other than there.
Well.
We take it there, we take it on general fund, we take it on a lot of places. We just have to.
No, I don't have any money.
Well.
I don't have anything.
We don't, we can't take three thousand dollars general fund right now.
Where am I gonna take it from? Cause you.
Commissioner's budget.
Two million dollars.
I've seen that three.
Was it three? It might have been three. It might have been three.
How soon?
I don't have any money.
How soon do you need that answer?
Well, this has been sitting here since, and they're they're due right away. This is five two. So we'll be rolling on to June. They're due immediately.
Well, if you can give us that and then maybe we can make an addendum tomorrow.
I can do that. I can do that. You don't have to, you just have to tell me where to take it from. That's, we don't have to put it on the agenda.
How many have we paid Sheriff?
We paid, I had two that were hanging at the sheriff's office from last October and November that I had it covered this year. They decided to send them to me at the beginning of this year because that's when the budget was getting sliced and diced. And then the prosecutor's office, like I said, they always helped us, but they had money to help us. So we would get it, and not to mention, I was cut too. So there's nowhere to take it from. This won't be my last one this year, I guess.
Are we any closer to getting any nice prisoners or federal prisoners that are in jail? I know Mahoney County's making thousands of dollars a week of all nice people. From the feds.
I, Mark, if I can understand, you know what, and I have an answer to that, and I talked to one of the deputies. The jail isn't sufficient.
Yeah.
The jail isn't sufficient.
So I'm I'm answering stuff that's a thought of me and a whole different thing, but from my understanding, jail's not sufficient. We don't have the people to handle this type of people. And. Jails, I mean, we've got people laying in canoes right now, jail meeting, there's not enough, there's not enough beds in the room as it is. So. We understand that, we'd like that, we'd love to do that, to bring the money in, but at this point, from my understanding. It's just not even close to being possible.
And unfortunately, like these transport bills, they're not the sheriff's. It is the commissioner's duty to pay.
Well, I understand that. But but if we were able to bring an income in off the jail, like Mahoney County's got like three hundred. Prisoners a month, I believe, going through their one hundred fifty bucks plus a day, then straight money coming from the feds where they're getting.
What we have from my understanding. Now, like I said, I'm talking out of my.
Yeah, Mahoney County has all the resources right now to be able to take them.
Mahoney County, yeah, Sheriff's Department, they're flooded.
Yes, they do.
Let's just call it where it is. They have money. Alright, real quick before we move off of that, where's the two hundred? Where's? For item number twenty-six. So when we get this at the evidence room. Bigs, is that money coming up one point seven too?
No, yeah, that's part of the.
Do you have a scope?
The one million on the left side.
How much it might cost, so you can anticipate for that to come up for one point seven as well?
Two fifty is what we set aside for. First action we took with that one.
So, it's like one point six seven five.
So you're you're saying that the cars are coming off that million?
Cars were separate. That was the next two fifty and we went over. First two fifty was just for that. Then that insecurity of anything else, we had security wise of the sheriff's department.
So, that's what I'm asking. So one million dollars was al- uh allocated from that fund to the sheriff's department.
No.
Solely.
One million of it is put on reserve. It's collateral for the sheriff's department. If we don't make more in the budget than what we thought we were gonna make. And we fall short of our our budget, or we are even on our budget, then we get that million to back the sheriff's department up at the end of the year for salaries, things like that.
And that needs to be put in.
The other million, the the that we're working off of is two fifty for this insecurity of the buildings, two fifty for the cars. One hundred apparently for uh Hydrella and then the rest should still be there. Ninety-two thousand, we were taking out uh to be reimbursed, but that's out of that also.
But that might not happen, is what. That's not a guarantee.
It's not guaranteed, but then we wouldn't get the grant. We wouldn't spend the money then.
So essentially, one point five is is dedicated to what I'm hearing, the sheriff's.
So that means we have two hundred seventy-five.
About two seventy-five left out of that, then for sure that's open for whatever. And then. Hopefully, the, we won't need that million for the sheriff's department. Hopefully, our our sales tax comes in higher. And then we just reallocate all the sales tax to the sheriff's department first, and then we free, anything we do that frees money up on that second million for us not spent.
But um, I mean, when will we know an issue on the tax money or that? I mean, because we're close and we're. We're we're in the same situation you guys are. We're out. I mean.
We cut.
Well, that's something we were gonna look at the budget. The budget commissioned to to give us updates on where are we with the budget as we go along with this stuff to clue us in on that.
So when will that come in? Cause I mean, I.
They meet every two weeks? Is that what it is?
We just had a meeting yesterday, so there should be a new certificate that just got emailed out to everybody.
There was, um.
Cause I'm in sheriff's.
You know what that is saying?
I don't recall the number off the top of my head. I apologize.
Was it up or down?
I think it was pretty steady. It's a little bit of a change, but I can't remember if it was slightly up or slightly down, but it was a very, it was a small change. Commissioners, we have the Board of Elections wanting to meet with the commissioners on their budget too. And I'm sure that there's others right around the corner. Which brings us to that point to where we do need to. Reassess where we're at. We had mentioned that from. You know, when we did finalize the budget, that we would revisit it.
I'm thinking, Commissioners, like, from an HR standpoint, like payroll alone, employees' cost, all of that. I guess I'm a little concerned because I'm already hearing what I think I'm hearing is. Where we don't have enough money. We are only at. May, well, June.
Well, we were coming up to our six month period and we should evaluate half year, we're we're on half year with all departments to see where we are with that.
Because if we don't have the cost to cover payroll, then we don't have a cost off, so we need to look at that. So, does the board want to look at that here soon?
Can you too? It needs to be done.
And I'm literally gonna be moving, have to move money out of payroll to cover mine possibly.
I understand that, but before at that point already, that's that's supposed to be the last million for like the last. Month. I mean, we did give the sheriff almost two million at the at the end of the year because he couldn't make payroll at the end. That's that's what that's for. It's not. It's not to prop something up in July. That's that's like toward the end of the stuff.
We're out, we are out of money.
Well, I understand that, but.
I have a feeling we're gonna be looking into that carryover again.
That's why I want to see that report and let's go from there and.
I have it ready.
And the sheriff is short, you're saying on.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, literally, I I mean, if we're waiting, I mean, I don't know. How we're gonna, I I don't know what happened to that constitution, but how are we gonna wait till the last month to decide if. To cover stuff that, and where am I gonna get to? Yeah, I'm gonna move money, I'm gonna have to start moving money from payroll, like Sheriff, to cover. General expenses. You gotta remember, we financed payroll that had. Close to the amount of money, but all the other money was taken, you know, out of the main budget.
Yeah.
We're, and I got everything, you wanna see my budget? I got things marked in red, yellow, green, sheriff's office, she was down in the office. I mean, we're we're running it. Seventy, eighty percent of what was allocated in those line items now. I mean, we, we're at the point where s- something, I'm in the same point, Sheriff, you guys are. I mean, it's. I, uh, my next point, when we move money, it's going to have to move money out of payroll to pay our bills that we're required to pay.
And that happens all the time. We look at the auditor, she's moving money all the time. Reappropriating the different areas, but it's still within her budget. She's moving money from one account to another account.
I don't, but um, Commissioners, if we get to a point though where we. Where if a, if an office um continues to deplete their payroll and there's no money to offset that. There will be no corrections officers. There will be no deputies because they can't make payroll. And historically, what we do know is, we do know last year that. The sheriff came back for two point two million at the year. We know the years before that, they came back for as much as three million. It's in your armpit monies.
We got three.
Here, yeah. So, we do know that this was going to happen. This was gonna be forthcoming. Additionally, something you may want to also think about is I'm hearing. And I probably knew this was gonna happen, you guys, I'm sure knew this was gonna happen too, that the Board of Elections. I mean, that was a substantial cut. In their budget and if they're coming back already too, I mean, it's not just gonna be what we see right here, right now. I I'm. Willing to bet there's going to be more coming to a theater near.
Oh, that's, but then again, that's why our mandate, we need to cut, cut, cut. Other, every other county in the state is operating on what we gave our Board of Elections. So if our Board of Elections can't operate on that, there's a problem with our Board of Elections. It's the same election in eighty-eight counties. They're voting for the same number of people for the most part in every county. If we're, if we can't stay within our budget with one point seven. The counties around us can, there's a problem. It's not the commissioner's problem.
But the commissioner's office, I can assure you, I have kept that budget. I I'm pretty, I'm pretty conservative with my numbers. And I, and I, I was cut a lot. I'm telling you, there's no money left.
I mean, we even went through the way slash the building maintenance department, two million right off.
Yes.
I mean, I hundred percent.
There was a rep.
I said, gotta go, gotta go, gotta go. So, um.
So my question would be, what are they doing to save money there? If they know they got less, what are they doing before they come to us? And say we need to make even more money. What have you cut? What are you saving within your own departments? That's what we need to look at. Gary's operating with misses seven employees right now or more and three of us top people. And he's he's still functioning and. Maybe not happy, but.
Well, there's some things that are. As of late, we can't do right now.
Alright, I mean, yeah. And then I think it's important to to note, since we're saying that, you know. Just going back to being short of groundskeeper, being short, you know, which takes away from maintenance repairs. There's a lot of things, this is a whole list of conversation. We're hearing a lot of, you know, people want things done in their buildings. They want this done, they want that done. If the budget isn't there to sustain it, it's not that building maintenance doesn't want to do it. They physically can't do it. We don't have that money to do those projects. And I know we're starting to hear a lot of pushback around that, and I get it. Everybody, I I totally get it. There's wants and there's needs, but um.
We have roofs leaking.
We're at, I mean, we.
We get that. We don't need to point out every wrongness in the county. We know every department could use more money. We all could use more money.
Your vote.
We're, again, we gotta provide the services to citizens. We're gonna do our jobs and we're the ones that have to.
What I'm.
Making decisions to get the stuff done so we can fill these holes and what needs done right now. Rehashing of, you know.
We're not rehashing.
Rogue, rogue, rogue doesn't do anything.
What we're asking for is a spirit of. Everybody, let's get on the boat together. That's what I'm, I can't speak to what anybody else is saying.
That's.
I'm saying, let's get on the boat, let's all start rowing in the same direction. So what we, what we don't want to see happen is we know where we're at. Again, I'm not rehashing. We know where we're at. But then there's the additional ask for things, right? When we're all trying to kind of scale back and cut back is what what I'm saying. So if we can all get on that same. Rowboat and row the same way, the better. Um, because as you can see, every little cost that comes up, it's just taken off of that, you know? And everybody wants something. I mean, but we gotta be able to make payroll. That's my HR standpoint. If we don't have people here who can work. There's no service. So all of us is need. So we've got to make payroll.
Bill, what, uh, you brought up percentage seller. Counties, our size on the carryover took up to, was it fifteen percent? I think it was actually maybe you guys that had that number that was a comparable.
It was myself.
So fifteen percent.
Percent.
It was twelve percent.
Twelve.
And we, there's no real, um, Commissioner, it's a really good question. It's unfortunate. There's no real um algorithm. That's what I found, but through NICO, um, I, you know, typically stay up with their information and through CCAO, there's both. Um, it was anywhere between eleven to twelve percent. They said it was best. Again, best doesn't mean you have to. Same thing with, you know. Doesn't mean that's the right answer, but to keep in your reserves, um. And as far.
We were around ten percent, right? I think we took.
We left eleven, like there's eleven, there was eleven percent of there after whatever the, whatever the Board of Commissioners took, um. There was a.
I'm just putting that out there. It could come to a point to where we're gonna have to look at that carryover again. I mean, can't. You know, you can't operate without. Money. And if it's there, then we're gonna have to utilize it. But again, like Commissioners say, get the report, see where we're at.
I, I got a question.
Mark.
I mean, okay, so we all know that, I mean, this is my first year in county here. Am I expected to run the budget all the way down into the lap two months and hopefully we cut my power or something? I I mean, I'm trying to.
That's fun, Sally.
Can I say where I'm coming from?
Right, and you're, you're how far, where are you at now? As far as you're, you're.
We're now over, we're, we're over budget on payroll. We're, we're running at eighty or ninety percent of budget on. On operations. So I I'm, and I mean. Again, I could, uh, share this one, but she knows how we're cut, we're cutting everything. I mean, we're, we're cutting off office stuff way down. Our overtime is way down. We're out redoing all contracts with the schools. I mean, we're five hundred, it's costing us five hundred thousand dollars. To supplement these schools. We've corrected that, we've corrected overtime on that. We're at Judge Rice this morning. Trying to change and bring more money in on the real estate sales, the fees that we're not getting. We're going after other fees of prisoner transport. I mean, we're doing every single thing we can, but I mean, that's a scary thought. If I've got to run my budget down to nothing. In November and then come and ask for a million and a half dollars, I'm sure. I I mean, I I just didn't want to do that like they did before, y- you know, where they're showing up in what December first and saying, hey, we need three million dollars or whatever. I, it's, I, I. I'm just asking this direction. I'm not saying anything.
Well, and we knew that's gonna be a fluid process. We know the last sheriff operated on eighteen point five and he got everything done with a lot of waste. If if we don't have the waste and you, you're got your eighteen point five. We should be in that ballpark of this, this neighborhood somewhere. And we got an extra million uh that we set aside in case you go over that.
But, I mean, for us, for us to operate skinny, we're, we're gonna be around over nineteen.
Well, how did the last sheriff do it on eighteen five?
I don't think he did.
He didn't do it. Yes, he did. It gets five hundred thousand, that was, was in. Equipment or whatever it was that we bought. It was five hundred thousand. We didn't have to do again. So when we remove that back, we got down to, he did everything he did.
But don't.
On eighteen.
The two point two nine, I was thought your, that is additional.
But we didn't do the two point two million.
Well, we did one point six, I believe.
Yeah, it's brought everything up to about eighteen five when it's done.
Well, we'll get the figures and see what he operated, but I thought.
Well, we'll get the figures and see what he operated, but I thought it was more than eighteen five, I thought it was either nineteen, five, or even a five.
He had to have three, three supplement from our.
Yeah.
Yeah, a three million.
That was two years ago, last year.
No, I know it wasn't last year, but I mean.
Two million, though.
He ran, he ran low, but it was always just fixed at the end, that's that was the problem.
We asked for two point two at the end, we gave one point.
Yeah, I I remember, I remember that. I remember that. That's because you guys.
Yeah, but can't we look up what he spent last year?
Sure.
That should be easy.
We've had that when we did the budget, when we looked at the budget, what he asked for and what he actually spent. We have that figure.
There was, you're right, I mean, there was some capital, there was something in there, he was like four hundred and eighty five thousand.
Well, I mean, we knew that sheriff was gonna.
Yeah, we did, and then there was um c- carryover encumbrances that were part of the problem as well. So there was a significant. Um. And in general, just from looking at the. Sales tax analysis provided by, right, to the board of commissioners and everything through the amended certification. I mean, sales taxes. It it is coming in higher than what was estimated, but not by much, what is ever, it it's it's, I would honestly. Just a brief analysis of looking at it, I would say that it's exactly comparable to. Uh actually, almost identical to what it was last year in twenty twenty four.
And and what the auditor told us was, her budget she gave us was a very super conservative budget. That it it was kind of a worst case scenario conservative. If we are hitting the numbers where we need to hit. Then we're we are better than what we than what we're expecting, because we budgeted for less than that.
Bart, we'll work on this.
I mean, every department's work in progress, every week, every department.
We realize what we need to do, it's just a matter of getting it organized and. Figure it out. We have a choice.
And that's still bringing us back to the same issue we had again. We can't ask the state rep, we can't ask the state senator, we can't ask anybody for what we need until we know what we need with nine one one. And we got the architect ready to go, we got the building that everyone says is the building, we got Cortland saying, we want you here. We looked at all the other buildings that we had out there. The study says, here's where we need to be. We need to pay now to see how much it's gonna cost to get us to where we need to be, where it says this.
Okay, so.
It could be as low as, I believe, five hundred thousand, it could be as high as one five. I mean, we we, that's where we'll make the decisions when we're asking for money, but then that moves people and then we then we. Are making progress.
Just for like this, that this can, this contingency fund, so we have, we're saving a million for the sheriff's office for the end of the year. You're saying that two hundred fifty thousand came off of the vehicles.
Right.
We've already.
Two sixty, whatever it was.
Oh, it's two eighty, we did go over a little bit, I'm just, I'm just doing the two fifty and two fifty for his evidence room. And that's what I have out of that, so that leaves like five hundred thousand.
Well, we would hope the evidence room would be less than two fifty to make up the difference of the two eighty, at least thirty thousand less we could do, two twenty, then we're even with that. I mean, it's it's not gonna take him two hundred fifty thousand to build over, I mean, that was simple.
Okay. So what what I'm saying is, if you want Tacy's and you want us to come out, we have five hundred thousand right there. That's what we have left.
All all we need to go with the next step is for you guys say. Talk to the health department, say, yes, we wanna go in there eventually, when we get the money, because they want us there. Uh I did talk to a board member, it said last week's information was uh partially correct, um you know, but they are not moving forward with that, they just haven't heard from us. Um, it's about ninety thousand dollars to complete the next phase, to get phase one, to get the renderings. To get everything done, to get the consultants in there. To get actually what you need for us to be ready to break ground on renovation. And that's what you're gonna need to present to, you know, Santucci and Dave Thomas and those guys, whoever else. Divine, whatever, money they promised years ago to fix us from, you know, where we're currently at um. So ninety thousand dollars will get us rolling on phase one, I believe they need, you know, those project ready documents. By, I think, October, for that we can learn for later funding for November um. So that's what would get us going on to 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 continue the process with a little bit of forward progress. Depending on what you guys decide to do in the future, if you decide to put, you know, the sales tax in front of the voters, or if you decide to do an assessment. Obviously, the sales tax would probably be the best bet, because that's gonna hit everybody and not just, you know, reversal owners um. And obviously, we have the lowest, you know, sales tax.
I don't wanna talk about any of that stuff, yeah, we're still at the point where I think money.
We need to have money for phase one, and it's gonna take a couple months to get that done, to get those structural engineering studies done, to figure out what they need to do to reinforce the building. Plus, it'll coincide with the health department wanting to replace the roof, if, you know, certain points of the roof need re-anchored. Or whatnot, they will be able to do those corrections while they're replacing the roof, um which would obviously help us save us money in the long run. That's gonna be a couple month process to get that done, so then for you to present it to Santucci, Thompson, any other representatives or anything like that. We have that stuff ready to go if.
I have a question, Casey, do they want us to replace the roof?
No, no, they're already gonna be doing that, they just said if we need stuff um, you know, reinforced or, you know, things modified. That it could be done while they're doing it, so they did, they wanted us to make sure we informed them what's going on, not, we said they would be at those meetings with those structural engineers.
When they bought the building, they knew about the roof issues, the ventilation issues.
Yeah, cause there was some, there was some discussion, I remember, we didn't, we didn't realize, you know, we don't know for sure.
They were just gonna, you know, that in.
So I mean, it's taking the first step, first step is always the scariest. We need to decide, is that where we're going? If it is, we're gonna start heading in that direction. If not, we're just standing still.
And and part of that, I I understand that there's no, you know, you don't know if there's money long term and. For sure, Bernard, you know, you don't want another study done and then it's sitting on the shelf. For a while, for a long, for it's to get the funding. The only problem with that perspective is. If you don't go forward with the bank, and you say, oh, we're gonna wait two more years, and you guys are gonna sit around in that building where you're currently at. When you decide then to go to the study again, we need to do another feasibility study on whatever potential new buildings would be out there then, and then you're gonna be wasting even more money. And not getting any closer to the goal.
Well.
We've already spent, you know, the money on the feasibility study.
Knowing what I know about Portland Council, and I've spoke to them personally, I've also spoke to Frank Niglowski. Who said that the only way that they were looking at is if they, if we weren't going in, but they ruled that all out. And that would have been in an MOU where, hey, listen, if the nine one one's coming in, you know, you're out of here. Temporarily you're here, but you're out, but I I that's, we just received the, an email that they they have no interest in. But they have an interest in nine one one being there.
Right.
And so, I mean, we do need to do something and we need to move on it um. I personally support it.
I support it a hundred percent, we're three years out of this thing, we need to make, go forward.
But um, so, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a move.
So is that agenda item back on the agenda then, the one for the last two weeks?
Yes.
I'd like to see it back on, can we put it back on if that's. We'll take it out of, we got, you just said we got five hundred thousand, a million, let's take it out of there.
Okay, and once we get that study, where's the million and a half gonna be?
That's where we're gonna, that's where we can go and shop it around that. That's what you said in the same meeting I did. We're gonna shop it with the state and their capital approvals budget.
Then, okay, and then what's the agreement with uh the health board?
We'll do an MO, we'll win our MOU with them right now, they're gonna let us be there for free. That's that's what they offered us.
That costs some.
We pay our u- our portion of utilities is what they wanted. And then we also agreed to our maintenance, that we would share maintenance when it came to plowing or.
Same with the dog.
Yes, yeah, we'd share maintenance, nothing different. It's it's the best deal in town, we're never gonna beat that deal. I mean, we we had the opportunity, maybe partnering up with the port, they find a building, they remodel it, sell it to us, but there's still money involved in that. There's still tax dollars involved in, whether it's their money or our money, and then it is gonna be free. We got, we got a sweetheart deal here right now, that that the health department's saying, come here, live upstairs.
Sweetheart deal has been here, I mean, it's been here for a year, a year and a half, okay, and and and. Two weeks ago, I was told that, you know, the commissioners aren't doing their job, but come to find out that that. You know, ARP money was there and it was available to do all.
We didn't have the, we didn't have a review board done, we didn't have the feasibility study done at that time.
But come on, we all knew that 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 needed to be done, okay, that along with the coroner's office, so you know.
And we didn't own a coroner's office, the hospital owned the business.
But, Kenny, when we had that, when all that money was here, we knew that the coroner's office needed to be taken care of.
Coroner's office commissioner wasn't even on the radar until Stuart Health shut their doors and said they're closing. Coroner's been there for fifteen, twenty years, it would still be there, the hospital never left. There would have been no reason for the coroner to leave.
Coroner got moved last August.
That's right, when when Stuart announced that they were moving.
Still, and it's still had ARP money to take care of that, and we still had ARP money to take care.
Last August, we.
Came in twenty twenty three, correct?
July thirty first.
Right, okay, and that was, and at that time, there was twenty three million dollars of ARP money that was uncommitted.
No.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, well, I.
I I came in twenty three, in January, and there was ten million, twenty eight million was already spent.
Then the documentation that I got is wrong.
And then your documentation is wrong, I'm here to tell you, when I got here, it was ten million, we had a public hearing, and we asked people to submit their money at that time, to see what they had.
It's wrong.
No, that's that's what we had, but it it's not to say that it wasn't promised on that stupid spreadsheet.
Yeah, it was already on the spreadsheet, it might not have been paid for, yes.
That was what, that was what Munus showed at that time, you exact, exactly that, that was what was in Munus.
So how do I find out how much money was left?
You guys don't have to figure that one out. I I don't, I don't know, I wasn't involved in that, I had somebody downstairs doing the spreadsheet.
If you look at the minutes, if you look at the minutes of January, February, my first months I got here, you'll see in the minutes, we had less than twelve million, it was. Ten and some change.
That's not, that's not what the auditor told me.
Well, the owner's wrong, man, she wasn't here either, she didn't come until March.
She came in the same time you did.
She did not, she came in in March, I came in in January.
Well, yeah, but I, you know, every it's.
That's what Munus, you did ask, and that's exactly what, that's what it showed in Munus.
In Munus, which is already putting on, put in and and checks being cut.
That's literally exactly, you get an encumbrance, you get the approval, the encumbrance, then you pay out, and that was, that was what was left at that time. That was there.
If you look at the first veins, I fought like hell to say that before we spent another penny, we got ten million left. You're not touching this ten million French go and canola mesa until we get to the township, so we make sure that the whole county gets a taste of this, and not just.
Every.
Who's already got the money, we're not gonna pour more money on the people that already got the money, we're gonna reach out and spread this money all over the county. To take care of townships that have been overlooked for years and years and decades. And that's what we did, and we had a public meeting, and we headed the Ag Center, people came and brought their requests. Answered their questions, then we prioritize those requests, we cut some out, we proved some, we put some on the maybe list, and we had a second public hearing. And redid it again in twenty four, and then that's how we finished the money up. Everything was done in public. With trustees and people coming submitting their bids, giving us their pitches on why they wanted the money.
Well, that's all, sure, yeah, commissioner, when you, when you tell people I got ten million dollars, come and present me your request, they're always gonna do that, but. I mean, my point is, we had the money to solve all these problems at at the county.
I did, but we didn't have the problems at the time, the problems didn't rear their head where like they were.
I disagree with you there.
We had no idea that Phil's side was gonna shut down.
Fifty years, okay, she's been here since twenty twenty three.
And we didn't get renditions on the dog pound, we did allocate some of the money to get the drawings, but we didn't get the drawings and stuff until we went to the fair last year.
That was made for the dog pound, that was donated, that was a donation.
Understand that.
Right, yeah, that was like.
But that was donated after I was here too, after, yeah, after I was already here.
But Kelly had put in, what, thirty, forty thousand?
I, yeah, it was, it was.
And they already had a previous study done at Kent State, so we have, we have two man drawings sent here.
Then the first set of drawings we had debuted at the fair got scrapped, and we had to come up with drawings number two.
Made it smaller and there was a sewer line.
Alright.
Commissioner, I wanna bring up a point, um, we have a meeting here in about a half an hour. And we're running a little, I mean, we have to take a drive. So, um, I don't know if there's any further business, but we're gonna have to further this discussion. At a later time, we're gonna be late. You said something, Darrell?
Yeah, we just had one thing, Darrell Donegan, uh facilities. So the farmer's market that occupies the wean building property, they're requesting to put a sidewalk in. Um, they're willing to pay for it with their funds, um, I just wanted to present it and see if there was any issues with that. So they have two rows of tents, and they wanna put a sidewalk down the center of it to make it more accessible.
I mean, it's.
You know.
Yeah, yeah. So we insure, and we already insure the, I already have been, we insure.
With that?
Yeah, I mean, we already insure that, it's not.
The property's insured.
Property is ours, the property is insured by us, we allow the Trumpo Neighborhood Action Partnership, I don't wanna use the wrong. To, yeah, to, to use the green space for. The farmer's markets on Tuesdays and during the summer hours um. The money from our bow is used to turn down the wean building, a contingency was that it had to be. Pecked or reserved as green space, from what I understand. I don't know that, I mean, I don't see an issue, I I mean, there's still maybe green space, you're putting a sidewalk, you want, but.
Was it on the agenda?
Uh, that's Jenna, Mary, uh.
She wanna tell?
I don't know, she's um with the.
Well, we should let her talk.
Might grab her.
Um, the wellness committee, she's also with the combined health, um.
I wanted to.
Like the wellness committee something, okay, she's um, she heads up the wellness committee.
Right.
Sorry, I have another, I'm really calling you on. Uh Jenna Amri, Trump County Health Department, County Wellness Committee, I'm just going to speak about um, reminding that in July twenty fifth. We have the scrapper's employee recognition night that you all had approved to complete any bonus activities. Please get your forms into me, please let your departments know on your employees, I'll be sending out an email out. We have a lot coming up here in June, the MAM, JFS, web drive, both of those are next week, and the virtual five K, and once you get those completed. Get those forms to me, and we will get you on your tickets, you're at at a hundred and eighty, we approve for five hundred, so. Um, please just let your employees know, it's an all you need night, get up to five per employee. Then get suited, anything, no, the all you need concession, see, I think.
Jenna, I wish, I mean, I wish you would have said something earlier, we would have had you. Well, you sat here for a long period of time, so.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, thank you, sorry, thank you.
Commissioner, put it up on the site too.
Why don't we have a sign in sheet, so you'll, you can have it when people come in, it's. And.
Yeah, I don't know.
And you can, you can have it there, and with someone that needs, you know, to speak early, you can have him speak and get out of here, but. Like you say, you look around the room, you don't know who wants to talk.
There's a sign sheet right next to you, but they don't put what they want.
Yeah.
We should have a column on there that says.
Right, yeah.
That's what, that's what the park board did when we go there.
Have a sign in and then put their.
You wanna speak, you know.
It's tough getting people to sign in, period.
Well, well, then when they have to wait, you can tell them, we have a sign in sheet, and maybe you can announce it.
Well, I'll make an announcement, well, I'll have to make an announcement.
Alright, so are we putting the tasty thing back in the agenda or?
Yeah. We need to, we need to do something.
Okay.
We need to move forward, but I mean, I I can understand Commissioner Bernard's points, but you know, that's why we have three commissioners and.
We just gotta move forward with stuff, we're rehashing the same stuff.
I understand, you know, we we're all here to, hey, we don't always agree, but.
I I need to know what the schedule's gonna be for June for the meetings.
Okay, um.
The department has seen the now as well, I mean, they're.
Well, Commissioner, I mentioned to you that um, I have uh. Family business, uh the week of the thirteenth and, or no, what what would that, what would that? Danny, when you go to the flying?
Well, I I am, I am gone the fifteenth to the twentieth, so the eighteenth of June, I'm gone. And then the flying is the twenty fifth, I'm gone.
But the meeting is.
Yeah, we've already determined that the week of the fifteen, you both will be gone.
Oh, we're gonna be gone, okay.
And that's June nineteenth, or Juneteenth is that week also?
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Yeah, so I would say let's not have a meeting that week.
The following week, I'm I'm here, I'm good, you know.
So the week that he's in the fly-in, is the meeting gonna stay on Tuesday, Wednesday, or I'm not sure?
What's those dates?
Fly-in, I believe, is the twenty fourth and twenty fifth.
Yeah, fly in Tuesday night, until Thursday.
Be here, we'll be.
Unless you wanted to move the meeting to to Friday.
No, cause that would be two, that'd be two weeks off, I mean.
You can't do two weeks off, I won't think. I could do the meeting on Monday or I could do it on Friday.
So you could do a Thursday, Friday, or?
No, Thursday, I'm not gonna be here Thursday, probably Friday.
You can listen to it.
If you wanna do workshop Thursday, meeting Friday.
Whatever you feel, I mean. I mean, I have no problem with it, you know, we could do the Thursday, Friday then.
Is that okay?
Uh Commissioner Bernard and I will be here Thursday, and then you'll return on Friday.
Or you can do it on Wednesday, Friday, if you wanted to do, or Tuesday, Friday, have your regular thing, just not have the meeting till Friday.
Oh, that might confuse people, though, if you don't have it, right? I don't know. Um.
Do we have to let you know now?
I mean, it would be nice to know.
Tuesday, Friday, or? Tuesday, Friday or Thursday, Friday? You wanna do Tuesday, Friday? That way it's a regular workshop on the Tuesday, but we moved to Friday. Okay, Tuesday, Friday.
Okay. Do you want, does the board want to use one of the June workshops or regular workshops to. Reassess where you're at with the budget? I mean, I think that's. Want to, again, we we have board of elections. Or it's the law, anyway.
I I I had a date um.
Well, what's the next workshop, next week? Do I have him come in next week?
Could.
Get it out of the way.
Yeah. You wanna contact Emily's?
Yeah.
Till June third?
Yeah.
Thursday and the workshop, right?
Tuesday.
Uh no, we're talking about board of elections on the third, and then the fourth would be the public meeting.
Alright, but the third is also the day that we talked about with the uh senior levy people, you want them to come in afterward? See if that's the day the works were to have that meeting after our workshop on the third. Have the board of elections here at the workshop, do senior levy like two or something?
Two. We could set it up for that, whatever, yeah. I should be a bill, huh? Yeah. Okay. You have all that, Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
And then the fourth, June fourth, we saw the Pendleton area.
Yes, yeah, by the next Wednesday, be Friday, be there, yeah.
And we got yoga, yoga, so.
How the bridge public hearing, ten AM, should be very quick.
And what day?
Wednesday, June fourth.
That should all be on our calendar, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, real quick, uh Gary Newbrouse, engineer, uh. On behalf of myself and probably a lot of the other department heads, you have an executive session at the end of your regular meeting. Is there a way you can do your comments and questions before you go back?
I mean, if we have the executive session at the end of the meeting?
Right, right.
Do the comments, yeah.
I I can't leave, because I think there's somebody in the audience that has comments or questions about water sewer issues. So I don't.
Yeah, but the problem is, we come back and then we have to act on when we did an executive session, we're still in the meeting, so it's like we're doing comments, then we're going back to our meeting and then. I I don't know how that, how that flows.
Well, when you come out of the executive session, the room should be empty by then, you all just come in to you.
I understand what he's saying, if it doesn't pertain to him, why should he hang around?
Exactly, yeah, there there's. I don't know, you're looking at.
Why don't we try to see how it works, and if it doesn't work, we'll go back to the other way.
Alex, do we have an executive session tomorrow or not?
I mean, I I can, I, there is something that I do need to discuss with the board commissioners, yes, if you had it. That's what.
Oh.
Well, that's not.
I think, I think it's pertinent, we talked about it, I think it's probably pertinent that we do that.
Alright, let's, let's try it. You know, there's no. Uh set way to do public comment, you could do public comment in the beginning of the.
Yeah, we never get our business done though.
I'm just saying, yeah, I mean.
Well, one, one last issue, I know we, I know we gotta go, but my phone's blowing up as we're sitting here.
Well, yeah, we have a meeting.
I know, but I got six texts that. The metro parks, it's heavy equipment they moved in today, and they just got into it with the trustees, they said they're starting to remove the dam today. With capital letters and.
Remember any bids?
They're trying to.
Pay a pill then, how can they do that?
I'm getting calls from the trustees and texts from the trustees and citizens that. They're out there with the construction people and they said they're starting to move the dam today. They're trying to unmute to talk to us to call in here, which I don't know. If there's anything we do, but I don't know where that stands. Did we make a decision on the appeal when I was gone last week, or? Where does that stand? I know Warren Thompson was appealing it, but.
Am I mute?
Well, I don't know, I don't know, that's a decision.
I tell you, we're gonna be here forever, and. We have, we have to be in Lordstown in twenty five minutes.
Yeah, and that's a hard.
Unfortunately, um. It's, it's, you know, no time, so.
I mean, we could discuss this tomorrow during the discussion, as they're the general meeting, I mean, we're gonna have to, I'm sure they'll be here. To discuss it at that time, but we have to figure that out. If they are moving equipment in today and they said they're starting with the dam, I thought there's some form of.
We're, we're, we're just with that. I'm gonna be a team.
We're gonna need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to be your chair.
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard, that's, I'm sorry.